Good morning, everyone. The June 3, 2020, meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being video-recorded as well as presented live on KCLV, Cable Channel 2, or closed caption for our hearing impaired viewers. Please note, customers of CenturyLink and Cox Communication may view this program in high-definition on Channel 1002 and at standard-definition on Channel 2. You may also watch this meeting live on Apple TV, Roku, and Mazing Fire TV on the Go-Vegas app. The City Council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programs, may be viewed on the Internet The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV Channel 2, the web, and the web on Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 p.m., Friday at 4:00 a.m., Saturday 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 7:00 a.m., next Monday at 5:00 p.m. This building is protected by state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler systems, and if alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits at the back of the chambers going out to the mezzanine and proceed out the double doors to the terrace, go out the back staircase. For anyone who has difficulty with stairs, please check with a marshal or fire official for assistance, and once outside, assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and First Streets. Employees wearing safety vests or our city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. For public comment related to items on the agenda, citizen participation, and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which you may complete and submit to our city clerk up front. Cards are available in the clerk's office at the rear of these chambers, and if you don't submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comments, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If anyone is present today who has need for hearing impaired equipment, please see our city clerk staff up front. If you parked in the parking garage across the street, a self-validation machine is located in the foyer between City Council chambers and the security desk you walk through to enter these chambers. You must have your ticket with you to use the machine, but if you don't have your ticket, see security personnel when exiting for a validation coupon. Before we begin with the agenda and comments, would everyone please rise for the invocation given this morning by Pastor Robin Garcia, on behalf of Pastor Paul Goulet International Church of Las Vegas, who could not join us today and remained standing for the pledge? Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor Goodman, and I wanted to say good morning to my friend, Councilwoman Seaman, and also to all the other council members. As the mayor said, my name is Robin Gerber, and I'm from the International Church of Las Vegas, and I've lived in Las Vegas for 27 years. Let's bow our head and pray. Heavenly Father, I thank you for guarding Las Vegas. Please send your Holy Spirit to keep our city safe during these times. I lift up our mayor, Mayor Goodman, and the City Council members. I pray for our sheriff today. I pray that you would give this team wisdom. You would give them counsel. You would give them courage. You would give them divine understanding, whisper into their ears as they are making decisions for our city. I pray specifically today that you would heal Police Officer Shay McElhanus this morning. I pray that you would bring comfort and peace to his family. Father, I pray that you would bless our great city. I can't even think of how many times I've heard our mayor call Las Vegas "a great city." This morning, I pray that you would bless this great city, that you would open the doors of our great city. You would open the gates to the city. You would open the church doors for the city. You would open the business doors to our city. You would bring peace to our city. You would bring justice to our city. You would bring prosperity to our city. I declare Jeremiah 29:7 over our city, "peace and prosperity." Father, I declare that what has looked desolate and abandoned, it will become fruitful, that we will recover all. We will recover what has been abandoned these last few months. The nations will come to the city. I declare Psalms 125:2, "Just as the mountains surround Jerusalem, you will surround the people both now and forevermore." Bless Las Vegas. We thank you for this great city. I pray that you will anoint these servants, these great council members of the city of Las Vegas. We pray this in your name, Jesus Christ, today, in your precious name. Amen. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice. I want to make a couple of comments, and I want to thank you all for observing, which we do here, very definitely, is respect for each other with a six-foot distance separation, and of course, when you are closer than that, wearing masks, as we right have here with our city clerks. But just know, this is becoming very successful for us as we try to control this virus. And you see, some of us choose to wear our masks still, and some of us have not, but we are six feet apart. So that's the first thing I want to mention this morning, and so I appreciate, if you're not six feet apart, please move your seat so you are further apart one from the other. As we all know, since we have been now through 10 weeks of the coronavirus, COVID-19, and trying to adhere to all the instructions that our governor has given us, and that the medical authorities with whom he's been working, it's been trying enough with so many people out of work. We were at less than 2% in January, February, and we're now over 33%. So we know the angst of having to stay home and work from there, or just be quarantined, and so the anxiety, the hatred, the anger that some feel, or the fear, has been a very, very big burden for each of us personally, and certainly as a family of people who love and believe in everything, that this city has grown to mean. And then, we've had this tragedy in Minneapolis, which is unfathomable, and yet, there's a passion, as you watch, whether it's on social media or on TV, not only what's happening in this country, but what's happening around the world in sensitivity, and in concern, and trying to make the world a better place. And we keep making the same mistakes over and over again. I just want to say with great gratitude, as the mayor of this phenomenal city, to praise the peaceful protesters, those who've come out every single night, every single afternoon during the day, to march, hold their signs, and work together as a family. And you look at all of us here, and knowing something about us, down on my right, we have a Latina, we have a gentleman, Mr. Knutson, who's of the LGBTQ, we have Irish background here.
Italian Jew.
Italian, oh, Italians, okay. Jewish, Greek, black.
Spanish. Latina. I'm a Greek-Greek mix, but Hispanic.
Oh, okay. So, you know, the beauty of this community is this community, and we represent what I believe Las Vegas is about, and why so many of us have moved here. But we have to kneel in prayer, of course, for Officer Shay McElhanus, whose life was jeopardized in this difficult time by senseless rioting and mayhem. Not the peaceful protesters, but by this horrible, senseless group of people that continue to take and destroy things that aren't theirs, and just in a free mayhem is the way it's been. And I know our city, because I hear it from you all, all the time, with broken hearts, join in worldwide condolence and prayers for George Floyd, whose life was so senselessly taken in Minneapolis on Memorial Day. But we here in Las Vegas are a family, and I look to my colleagues here as representative of the diversity of who we are. And we're a family. And like family, whether you are with family with little children or older family members, you know, you fight and you get along, but that's the joy of family, because unavítingly there is a deeper, deeper understanding and a shared focus to make this community, this community for which we are responsible, the best it can be. But our prayers and condolences to the family of George Floyd in that senseless murder that happened, and all those who are sensitive to that. But we have made great strides over the past 50 years in Las Vegas, which was a segregated, literally segregated, community in the '60s, late '60s still. We are a diverse and respectful body of protesters in Las Vegas who speak to who we are as a people, and of course, part of who we are as a people is our law enforcement body. They are part of our family. Our law enforcement will not be painted with the same brush where errors are made, because our law enforcement is in our communities, working every day in everything we ask, working with our little children, with our seniors, in so many ways, in so many programs they have brought for us. They have set, with this community and leadership, new standards that are models for the rest of the country. They really work daily and hourly to be part of it. And when I think of the thought that what would happen if we didn't have our law enforcement protecting us, protecting the peaceful protesters, protecting those who care so much, what would we have? They go to work every single day of their lives. They have no idea if they're coming home, or they're going to be wounded, and I think of Officer Shay McElhanus. He's a young man of 29, with beautiful parents, families, brothers, and it is heart-wrenching that he doesn't have a chance to have the normal seat today that we enjoy, and I pray with all of you that he survives and has a normal life. But he did that because he got up in the morning to protect us and our property. Our law enforcement has been and working for the past 20 years for certain, that I know of, every day in our black communities, in all of our minority communities, trying to give them a voice to hear what they're saying, meetings with our faith initiative leaders, and trying to make this community what we want it and demand it to be, including law enforcement, demands that each one of them is a person, just like each one of you or anybody who's at home. What truly means being one is acceptance, and patience, and understanding, and communication, and that is exemplified by each facet. We have to try harder. We have much to achieve still, but thank you, protesters. Thank you for those who've been visiting us, that have been calm and peaceful through all of this. But I will tell you, the peace that is broken, and we cannot tolerate it. You hear stories again and again about these looters, and these rioters that are either come from ourselves, and I don't know where their parents are, or their loved ones are, that are allowing them to go into private businesses, smash windows, and take like they're entitled. And they do this regardless of who you are. They're in the black stores as much as they're in any other store, and this is not tolerable. And we, the peaceful protesters, must say, they are not the voice, and the problem is, the media gives them a bigger voice than we have as those who protest. We're a peaceful people, and we're a loving people, and we are an accepting people. And all I ask is for everybody that's out there protesting, make sure your voice is loud enough that anybody that comes in here, or who's born and raised here, that is someone who is intent on breaking into, and stealing, and destroying property, or even putting anybody's life in jeopardy with these bottles of ice, and rocks, and things they're throwing and coming in to our city, we, the peaceful protesters, together as one, don't let them paint our city with their voice and their actions. Every protester must stand up and stop the looting, the rioting, and the harm to our community. And so, as I have been given here, this beautiful young man, Shay McElhanus, is fighting for his life because of these hateful looters and rioters. And so, let's all stand as we have been for the past 20 years, as one people, a total mix, as you see here, as a part, working together, and keep Las Vegas a symbol of where life is really good, and people accept each other and talk to each other. And you will be hearing from, I know every one of my council members have asked, I want to speak, I want to say something. You will be hearing from us all. But for George Floyd, and this precious young man of ours, make sure you stand and get rid of the looters, and those who work against the beauty of life here. So, thank you, and we will move on at this point to Agenda Item 5. Yes. Pardon?
Can you discuss it?
Not at this point. Well, we're going to have public comment. Thank you. We're into Agenda Item 5. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed will be limited. Any comments made will be cross-referenced to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card or wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium and state your name for the record, and if it's unusual, if you would spell it for our city clerk. This is your opportunity to address the City Council, but the council's not able to respond or engage in dialogue. We'll set the time at 1 minute, and so if anyone who wants to come up, there is a second public comment at the end of City Council, but on public comment items, there's another opportunity that are agendized. So, anyone who would like to address council at this point, please come forward, state your name for the record, and if there are many of you, you can just get in line, it would be perfect. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Cheryl Lynn Costner, and I ask that we seek federal jurisdiction of the Henderson area to be officially declared as an opportunity zone, so that businesses will be encouraged to return for federal tax incentives. Second, laws regarding trash removal in both active and abandoned parking lots, building exteriors, be enforced to make Henderson District.
I'm so sorry, ma'am. You can come at the end of the meeting, but that's not Agenda.
You said I had, you said I had 1 minute, so I'm rushing through everything.
No, 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 it wasn't about that. This is about agendized items, that Henderson and what you're speaking to is not on the agenda.
What is the agenda right now?
Do we have copies?
Okay, I mean, I have a third.
Yeah, so here's a copy of the agenda. If you'd like to speak at the end of the, at the end of this meeting, then that's when you can speak. Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. And we will then move on to Agenda Item 6. For possible action, any items from the 9:00 a.m. session, the council staff, and/or applicant wish to be stricken, table, withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting, may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Protam?
Madam Mayor, the following items have been requested to be held in abeyance, withdrawn, tabled, or stricken. Item 42, SDR 78245, applicant Mo Construction LLC, owner CVV LLC, on 0.43 acres at 3801 West Charleston Boulevard. It's going to be held in abeyance till July 8, 2020. It's requested by Councilman Knutson. Item 43, ROC 78317, applicant Arjun Hawalapai Way LLC, owner Red Rupi LLC, review of condition of an approved petition to vacate, VAC 75859, the north half of Darling Road East on Hawalapai to remove condition number 2. A withdrawal without prejudice is requested by the applicant, and Madam Mayor, that's my motion.
Thank you. There's motion, please vote, and please post. And that motion carries. Agenda Item 7, possible action to approve the final minutes by reference of the May 6, 2020 regular City Council meeting. Mayor Protam may have a motion to approve those minutes.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the May 6, 2020 regular City Council meeting.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve the minutes. Please vote, and please post. Those motions carry. Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda 8. Items 8 through 29 on the consent agenda are considered to be routine or recommended for approval by the departments, may be enacted in one motion. Note that the records should reflect my abstention on item number 17, because it pertains to marijuana-related businesses, and one of my sons involved in the industry. I will be voting on all other items. Mayor Protam, I understand you want to pull forward Agenda Item 13, to be heard, oh, to be heard separately after the consent vote is taken. Are there any other items council wishes to bring forward? No. Okay, thank you. Mayor Protam may have a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve consent items 8 through 29, with the exception of item 13.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote, and please post. Motion carries. Agenda Item 13, for possible action to approve award of modification number 1 to contract number 190316 DD EMS, Communication and Systems Assessments, Fire and Rescue Award Recommended to Fitch &amp; Associates LLC, 88,000 various funds, all awards. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor Goodman, members of the council. I'm Willie McDonald, I'm the city's fire chief. We have been engaged with Fitch &amp; Associates since April of 2019, and the purpose of that engagement has been to assist us in developing a strategic plan for our communication center in terms of the regional provision of services throughout Clark County, and as well to assist us in the evaluation and consideration for improvements in our emergency medical services system. We've been working on that collectively as an organization, and along with Fitch &amp; Associates for, you know, almost, it's been almost a year. We are at the point where we are working towards developing specifications and requirements for a new system, and the development of a request for proposal would be very complicated and important for us to make sure that we delineate specifically the improvements that we would want to make sure that we have included in our new system. And so, in order to do that, and to ensure the objectivity of a process in terms of devaluation, we have proposed to use Fitch &amp; Associates to assist us in that process moving forward. So that's expanded the scope of the work that we have asked for from them, and so this agreement would allow for us to be able to continue to work on developing that, those requirements, and moving forward that process, assuming, if the council were to approve for us to move forward in that manner.
Okay, thank you. Let me see, if the council question, in 1 second, questions? Yes, please, Councilwoman Seaman.
Well, it's more of a statement on this subject. Public safety is one of our top priorities as an elected official, and one I take very seriously. Since my election to City Council, I've had calls and emails into my office with issues and concern on a wide variety of subjects. What I have not had is a single call or email regarding any problems or issues with our 911 medical response. This seems like a textbook example to me, if it isn't broke, don't fix it. The last few months should, the last few months have should as how critical our first responders are to our health and well-being, which is why I cannot support this effort to experiment with a new model of how we deliver medical response services to our community. Instead, I support an extension of the contract for a system that has served us well.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Pardon?
Councilman Anthony? No?
No?
Okay.
Any other comments from anyone?
Yeah.
Yes, please. Mayor Protam?
No comments.
Okay, yes, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, I just want to understand what we're voting on and what this agenda item is. So, this is what, you just briefed us on, in my understanding, and that's why I want to make sure that I'm understanding what we're voting on. It's to contract with Fitch &amp; Associates to improve the system, and is this the 911 calling-in system? I thought it was maybe looking at evaluating the current status of potentially that calling system, or there might be a software system upgrade that we're in need of. Can you shed light, because this is not, obviously, my wheelhouse. I don't know how fire operates and what is necessary for us to continue to. I don't know how fire operates and what is necessary for us to continue to provide timely, just help. I know that in my ward, every second matters because a lot of times, fire is attending to medical episodes. And so, I know that every second means difference between life or death, and I just want to kind of be clear about what we're voting here.
Mayor Goodman, members of the council, Councilwoman Diaz, we did, in fact, engage Fitch back in April of 2019 for two reasons. One was to look through our communication center in all phases in terms of the way that we receive information, the way that we process information, even the building, even the layout, and what we could do to provide better services throughout, moving forward. And that was to include a consideration of potentially co-locating with MetroCom, Las Vegas Metro's Police Communication Center, to see if there was an opportunity for us to further enhance and provide better services through that joint relationship and the co-location. We also engaged Fitch to assist us in evaluating our pre-hospital care system, both in terms of how we provided services as Las Vegas Fire and Rescue and our partners provide those services, and if there were ways to improve upon that, if there was some improvements that we can make to the services that were being provided, and as you know, we have advanced additional programs to the council that you have all approved for us to be able to provide better services to our community. And also, in anticipation of making a change in our system, we've asked them to help us determine how best to move forward, what kinds of requirements and specifications might be needed if we were to incorporate improvements into our system, and then how we would move forward with evaluating and measuring any potential partners that we would have going forward. This proposal is to revise the contract that we have with Fitch and Associates to continue to assist us in moving forward with those development of that specifications and a request for proposal for consideration for improving how we provide the services in an integrated manner to the community.
If I could, and I see Mayor Protam, did you, Councilwoman Knutson, have a comment too? Okay.
Chief McDonald, I appreciate the opportunity to ask the question. We've had many conversations about this. This is in relation also to your efforts to save money for the city and maintain the same level of public safety that we currently have. I know I've worked closely with AMR and asked the same questions that I've asked of you, but I just want to ask that question publicly, is this has something to do with your efforts to try to save money for the city as well? Is that right?
Mayor Goodman, members of the council, Councilmember Knutson, we absolutely feel as though that there is a better way to provide the services that would be more efficient, cost-effective to the community, and provide for greater revenues for the city. And so, yes, that is a part of the consideration. We also, though, believe that there is the integration of resources into our system, not too independent system, but actually integrating the resources so that we could provide services, the right resource at the right time to the right location, and as well, the medical oversight that we would be able to provide, we think is a dramatic improvement to how we could provide services to our community.
Thank you. I had a few questions, and knowing your background, and you've been doing this, this isn't your first year. So, first of all, what I'd like to find out is, where is headquarters for Fitch? Are they out of...
I don't know the answer.
Okay, they're out of state.
They're not from Nevada, though.
Okay, and the length of time they've been in operations?
It's been, Mayor Goodman, it's been many, many, many years. All of the, the principal, Jay Fitch, started the company many, many years ago, but many of the members that he has as a part of his primary team are former practitioners, either in private ambulance companies, fire departments, police agencies, and communication centers.
Well, that's where I thought you might know from your past. The other thing is, this one-year contract and just automatically renewable? Or is it a multi-year contract at this price? Where are we with this, please?
Mayor Goodman, members of the council, this would be a not-to-exceed. It's for a specific body of work, and so this would not go on beyond the completion of the process. And again, this would be assuming that the council would approve for us to move in this matter.
Thank you. Knew it, but had to ask publicly anyway. And, oh, please, whose hand was up first? Okay, Councilwoman Creer.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Creer.
Thank you. Chief, so are you, Fitch and Associates is already on board? You say they've been engaged since April of last year?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and why is this now coming before, is this a renewal of their contract? Or is it, is it, why is this here now?
Mayor Goodman, members of the council, Councilmember Creer, it's, yes, they've been with us for over a year. This would be an extension of the contract, additional work that we've requested for their assistance through this process.
Okay. And prior to them, they've been engaged for a year. There was another company that was engaged, and obviously. But a year ago, we decided to move forward with Fitch and Associates. You feel they're doing a good job, and they're efficient, obviously?
Absolutely, Councilmember. It's been Fitch for both studies. Fitch for the communication center strategic plan as well as with EMS system.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Anthony, Mr. Senior.
Thanks, Mayor. You know, when times are good, we can do these kinds of studies. Today, our budget is an absolute mess. I can't support $88,000 today to do studies. We've got a lot of smart people, including you and your staff, that can take a look at things today, and when things get better, maybe we can afford to bring them back on. But $88,000 is, I can't support spending that in today's budget economy, so I can't support this. So, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Is there anything that you would like to add based on the flavor of what you're, did you want to speak? Yes, please.
So, I just want to be crystal clear with all of my council members, because it's not clear. And if you read the contract, it's not about updating our 911 system, because I'm all about that, Councilwoman Diaz. This is $88,000 to pay a consultant to basically put out an RFP. We work with AMR. AMR's contract isn't up until December. We at the city and our city staff and this city staff, if they want to do an RFP, that's more than welcome. I'm open for, you know, if you want to do an RFP, absolutely. What can we do to get the best price for the city? But today, with our budget and with this COVID and with our horrible economy and the money we have to spend on fixing broken glass and our businesses, $88,000 to put an RFP out, when we could put an RFP out ourselves without spending the $88,000, we can do. We're not in a rush. Our contract doesn't end until December, so I'm not going to support wasting $88,000 on a consultant to do an RFP. We can do it ourselves. We put it online. We say, hey, you guys, bid for the contract. It doesn't cost $88,000. That's why I'm not supporting it.
Okay, back to you, Chief. You are the best, Chief, and we appreciate everything in your fire and rescue do. But I think this is an opportunity, Councilwoman...
Yeah, I just have one more question. So, when asked how we'll save money, I really didn't hear how we would save money. But I just want, for the record, how much money have we already spent?
$196,000. We've spent $196,000 with this consultant firm already.
$196,000, and if we have not, you know, and we're still back to having a contract with AMR to fix something I believe isn't broken, so I just...
An out-of-state consultant.
I missed the $196,000. Okay, thank you.
So, back to you to talk to your efforts here. If there's anything more that you wanted to add, listening to my colleagues up here. Thanks.
Mayor Goodman, members of the council, greatly appreciate the opportunity to be here today. And I wanted to say that I feel as though what we are trying to do and what we have done throughout the time that we've been evaluating and moving forward in our system is to try to make improvements and to provide better services to our community and to ensure that the community gets the services they need and desire, and to make sure that we can provide those services the best we can. So, what we are wanting to do is, we are wanting to make sure that we develop a process that we include the really clear requirements and specifications to ensure that the system would be proposed and would be presented in the manner that we believe that it would best integrate with Las Vegas Fire and Rescue resources, and we would be able to maintain the operational oversight, the incorporation into our system, the medical oversight in direction, as well as ensuring that we are the most cost-effective and efficient system that we could possibly provide. That is really important work. Ensuring that we get the process right, I think, is really important to everyone, and so that's the purpose of this agreement, and those are my comments.
I'd like to add, knowing your education, your experience, and your voice as the professional in this area. Of course, this is not my ballgame either, but listening to my colleagues and knowing the effort we're making, we're asking others to make it in reference to our budget.
Yes.
Reviewing this in six months or 10 months to bring it back at another later time, that is not denied here, correct? You could go ahead and come back to us.
We could.
As the economy writes itself, we get the 33% of our population back to work and improve everything for everybody. Is that possible?
Mayor, that is a possibility. What that would, though, the result of that would be that we would be up against the expiration of the current franchise agreement that we have. And so, the options for us at that point would be provide all the services ourselves, do an extension of the agreement, and, you know, perhaps not be able to incorporate many of the improvements that we're proposing, or delaying the ability to be able to do that.
But this contract holds through December, correct? The current one?
The current contract, yes.
Yes. So, it could be that you could come back to us in October with an evaluation. We'd have a better sense five months from now, four months from now, where we are in the economy. And just knowing, we've all been asked to really tighten our belts and everything to get us through since the C-Tax has been greatly affected because all the hotels have been closed and nobody's occupying rooms. So, is that something that even though it is not where you're headed, that you could come back to us in early October to see where we are in the economy? I am very sensitive to what they're saying, and I appreciate Councilwoman Diaz, because I'm sort of in the same ballgame where she was, not quite understanding what this was, but listening to the $88,000. I know our manager has, did you want to say, he has a...
Yes, Madam Mayor, Scott Adams, city manager. Let me just provide a few thoughts. Our fire department is the largest department from an expenditure standpoint in the city, other than Metro. As you know, we make a very large contribution to Metro. But right behind it is what the cost of our fire department represents as a percentage of our total general fund budget. It's about 25%. I would be remiss, as your city manager, to not push our fire chief to analyze its operations, to provide the most efficient, cost-effective operation possible, especially at this point in time in the evolution of our city. We have serious budget problems, and it behooves us now to look at all the different options that could either generate more revenue out of that department or reduce expenditures, or both. What I'm hearing is there's a hesitation or a concern about spending money on an outside consultant, prepare an RFP to evaluate, or at least look at other options available as to how we can most cost-effectively operate our department. So, I think, should this not pass, we'll develop the RFP without a consultant and put it out on the street and do it, should you decide not to do this. It would be much better to use an expert who knows this business cold. There's an old saying, sometimes you can be a penny wise and a pound foolish. And this is one where I feel like we would be spending $88,000 to potentially save millions or generate millions, or a little bit of both, in a function of the city that is a really incredible portion of our operating budget. And I think the one thing that I would say about our fire department is they pride themselves on being a best-practice operation. And we're simply trying to make us further a best-practice operation. So, with those thoughts, I appreciate the concerns expressed from a budget standpoint by council, but I will not let my foot off the gas on analyzing that operation to maximize efficiency. There's too much cost there for us not to look real hard at from the standpoint of either generating revenue, which, there's a lot of revenue that's left on the table that we could be bringing into the city and looking at the cost side.
I think, you know, we've taken your leadership because you've made us all realize what a budgetary nightmare we're in, as is the whole state. And so, my biggest concern, and I know what you're saying, and I trust the leadership that we have in fire and rescue and your leadership, to me, is to hold tight at this point and not spend the money if, in fact, in October, two months ahead of, and we'll know better where we are, because every penny, we don't want to jeopardize or risk one life. And this seems to be, it's more systematic, it's review, and it may save us money. But at this point, we have been told, we don't have any money. So, my question to you is, if we wait and have you come back to us in February, Fitch is still under contract and could provide the same service, but we would have a sense of where we are financially, and that's what I'm hearing, because you have asked us and you have asked your staff, we have to cut, cut. You're asking, we're asking our union partners and families, you know, step back. While I think this is a very wise approach, if, in fact, we're not jeopardizing anybody's life by saying, come back to us in October, where we have a better feel when the hotels are open and business is back, and we've got this 400,000 people back to work.
Yeah, there is, Madam Mayor, Scott Adams against city manager. There's a bit of a timing issue, though, relative to, I believe, the issuance of an RFP and looking and evaluating our options. It takes a while to put it together, get it on the street, get the responses, evaluate that response, and then get back to you with a recommendation. That can't be done, really, in 60 days, which is the time that it would give us through the end of, to the expiration of the current agreement. So, we're starting now, early, to give us time to do all that. So, the issue is, do we hire the best technical expertise available to put it together? We use our city staff?
Okay. October 7th is the first? So, that would give, actually, it would give you 90 days. I just have this discomfort because of the fact we have no room tax coming in, and we don't know what's going to happen. Are we going to be shut down again? And so, I'm just, you know, and it's really, unfortunately, your fault, because you said tighten your belts. We're cutting your...
It is my fault. And it is my fault that we're here right now on this item. Because I will attest that I am pushing really hard, really hard, to create the most efficient fire department we can have from a cost and revenue standpoint.
And you know, at the retreat, we all said, number one, for every one of us, and it's happened every year for the past 10 that I know of, it's been safety first, and you are safety. You and our law enforcement, and that's the big chunk of our budget. But the reality is, when we're asking other parts of our community to tighten their belt and join us in this, I think it's very astute of council... and join us in this, I think it's very astute of council to be looking at this and wonder if you had 90 days and under, we do miracles here. So can you put this thing together in 90 days and come back if it were? October 7th is the first meeting in October and let us vote on this at this point and then regroup with us in, in October, is that no?
Mayor Goodman, what could happen is what City Manager Scott Adams said, is we could continue to work on the development of the RFP. It would be much better, in my view, to have the expertise of a consultant that has had multitudes of experience in bringing these forward, ensuring that all the specifications and requirements are clearly delineated in the, in the document that would be published. What could happen though is we could work on that as a staff. We have a great purchasing department, we have great city attorney and internally to Fire and Rescue, we've got awesome staff. We could, we could work on bringing it forward and publishing the RFP and then coming to you and saying, we need the assistance at that point, you know, if you say it in October, we need the assistance at that point to help us manage the process and evaluate the submittals.
Sounds good to me. Sorry. But to our City Manager, as we're out there in discussions and trying to get everybody to tighten their belts, I think it makes a great statement that this council's very, very sensitive to that. And if in fact by October 7th, we put it on the agenda-
That would assume, yes Mayor, that, that would assume, I'm sorry to interrupt, that we get the RFP published by that time.
So, Madam Mayor-
Okay, and then Councilman Knutson too.
So, Madam Mayor, so we hear you. I think we have some first responders in here if they want to come and I thought I saw Steve, but, but secondly, I really think with 90 days with you, Chief Willie, who we all love and respect by the way a lot.
Thank you.
And with our brilliant City Manager over there, Scott Adams. With you two having 90 days, you can bring our folks in, you can bring, you can, like be the CEO. I've been the CEO of so many companies. What happens when I want to change things, hire things, change budgets? I bring them in and I talk about it. You've got 90 days. Dude, that's like a long time. So I'm going to vote to, to deny this request and come back October 7th.
Councilman Knutson.
Mayor Goodman, I appreciate the conversation. I understand the, the constraints this city is in. I've spent a lot of time with the chief and with our chief public safety officer, Mr. Hacker. I, I think that it's a reasonable approach. At the end of the day, I'm going to take your recommendation. I think that's my obligation is to listen to the experts. You have the badge, you have the stripes on your shirt. I will trust your recommendation. I also want to acknowledge Mr. Damon Schilling from AMR is in the audience. I think AMR has been an amazing partner. I don't think this precludes or prohibits us from working with them in the future. I think they are part of our public safety system. At the end of the day, Chief, I would take your recommendation. You have the expertise and I trust you.
Thank you.
With the conversation that happened at the council today, what is your recommendation?
Mayor Goodman, members of the council, council member, Councilman Knutson, understanding the concerns that I'm hearing from the council and recognizing that they're, that we are having some real significant budget challenges, my recommendation at this point would be to direct staff to develop an RFP and get it ready for distribution, get the process going and then come back to you in October with the request for assistance to manage the process and even help us evaluate the submittals and move forward in that way.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Mayor, so I believe I made a motion to deny this 13th, but if we want to ask our staff how we can, as our City Manager and our chief, develop an RFP without spending $88,000. So how do we staff go about the motion that has been set on the floor to deny item 13, however, come back October 7th with that idea?
Where is legal?
Down here, Mayor Jeff Dorcek, Deputy City Attorney. It sounds like we can just do an abeyance until the first meeting in October, October 7th, 2020. So a motion to obey.
Make your motion. Oh, no. Who wants to make, you or account, okay.
So, so do we want to obey it or do we just want to cancel this? Because I don't want to spend $88,000. I want them to come back. I want our City Manager, who makes the big bucks, and our chief, who makes even bigger bucks, to spend their time and energy and come up with an RFP themselves, work with our first responders, so they can come back to ask us, yeah, you know, this is where we're going, but I don't, I don't, I want to deny the 88,000 today and I want them coming back on October 7th. That's my motion.
Right, if you'd like a denial, just a motion to deny the item and they'll probably tee up the exact same item in October, but that, just a motion to deny would kill it today.
And if others on council would just want to simply obey it?
Then we would have a motion to hold the item in abeyance. We wouldn't be spending any money, it would be held in abeyance until another vote and consideration on October 7th.
And then do you amend that motion to say that directing staff, as Chief Willie said, that he would go back, work on the RFP with staff in-house and then be coming back in October, October 7th, which shows good faith in what you're doing and what you're recommending to us in the first place. And although I certainly agree with Councilman Knutson, AMR's been a wonderful partner for us and I know you feel that way as well.
Mayor Goodman, members of the council, if I, if I may, just to ensure that I'm getting what you're saying and that the direction is being provided, we would, as a staff, Fire and Rescue, City Manager's office, Finance, City Attorney's office, would use the time between now and the first meeting in October to put together the documentation for a request for proposal, that we would include all the specifications and requirements in that document, that we would bring it forward to you and then we would propose to request assistance from an expert consultant on managing the process, evaluating, helping us to evaluate, even putting the group together to do the evaluation. I, I will say this though, it will be a different scope of work that we would be asking for because some of the expertise that we would be asking for here would be, would be done in-house. And so what we'd be, we'd be asking for a smaller scope of work at that time.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
She's confused.
If I could, I might recommend, if it's not out of order, that you strike the item. That you strike the item.
I was, I was going to suggest that too.
Yeah, and then we would come back at a later date with the appropriate scope of services for that point in time to do the thing that we need from that consult.
That's what I was going to suggest as well. You could just strike it and then have direct staff to come back when they feel appropriate.
Councilman Creer, could you make that motion?
No, 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 no. Councilman Anthony.
I'm just, I'm, I'm very confused here because we have not, we have not agendized and discussed whether or not we're going to extend AMR's contract or do an RFP. We've never discussed that. We've never voted on that. We're just voting on this contract today. As we're discussing AMR contract, you're, we're going to have to vote on whether we want to extend the contract or do an RFP. So you need to bring that to us, in my mind, sometime in the next month or so to have that discussion and vote on that. I don't believe you can do an RFP on a contract without us approving it. So the only thing I'm voting on today-
It's this item.
-is I do not want to spend $88,000 today on this contract. We're going to have to discuss very soon on whether or not we're going to extend AMR's contract or not extend it and that's a discussion for another day, in my mind.
Okay, thank you. The agenda item is 13. I'm going back to legal, nothing moves without legal.
Thank you, Mayor Jeff Dorcek, Deputy City Attorney. As Councilman Creer pointed out, yeah, another option is just to strike the item we've been discussing. We've done motions to strike, obviously, pretty frequently here in the last couple of years. If you want to deny it, it would be a motion to deny the Fitch contract. It sounds like Chief McDonald understands the direction that the council wants to take, so some new items will be put together for the first meeting in October.
Thank you. And then reference Councilman Anthony's commentary as that fits in with, if in fact the motion is, we have a motion on the table right now, which we have to take off the table if we're going to strike, move to strike, but the AMR contract that might be forthcoming, does that have any bearing on if this is stricken?
It does not. This item is for the Fitch consulting contract, so you're looking to strike it or deny it and then, as I said, it sounds like Chief and City Manager Adams both know what the direction is from council and you'll hear back from them with new item or items, October 7th or even before.
Thank you very much. All right, let's go back. Anything from council again? Okay. Any, any other comment? See, what a great council. I mean, isn't this awesome?
Madam Mayor, it's still not clear. I-
We get it.
I don't. I, in response to Councilman Anthony, we issue RFPs, we conduct RFP processes administratively all the time without the council first approving whether we issue those RFPs. It's just done as a matter of administrative practice. It's done to find the best solution to a needed service or problem or project or whatever it happens to be. So it would be our intent, and I want this to be clear, that we'll issue an RFP administratively, come back to you in October with potentially the need for consulting services to help us finish that process, to bring to you some alternatives for how to deal with the franchise at a timing that's appropriate to continue or not continue, so we have continuous connectivity of franchise services.
Okay. Thank you. And again, one more time to our attorney, and that clarity is exactly what has been ongoing and does work in this situation, correct?
Correct. On the current item, it's going to be a strike or denial, it sounds like, and then the City Manager will be bringing back results of a request for proposal and there will be some other things regarding all of these other services that aren't agendized for this item so that, there will be other items later.
Thank you very much. Don't go away yet because we have more comments. This was a very exciting moment here. Okay, let's go to Councilman Anthony and did you also, Councilwoman, want to say something?
Scott, Scott, I just want to be clear on something.
I don't even know if we should, even supposed to be discussing the AMR contract right now, but the one thing I want clear is the, the contract that's in place today allows for an extension of a couple of years. I don't know exactly what it is. It could be, and I don't know this, it could be the city council just wants to extend the contract and not do an RFP. So I, I think you're a little presumptive in making the decision to do an RFP when you haven't allowed us to discuss whether or not to extend the contract, because maybe we don't want to do that. So I, I believe we need to have an agenda item to discuss whether or not to extend the contract and if the city council doesn't want to do that and wants to do an RFP, fine. But the, the contract allows for an extension and we need to have that discussion first before we start doing RFPs. If this was a brand-new contract, our, obviously, an RFP would be allowed, but this is an existing contract with an existing continuation of it that we should vote on. And we're not doing that.
City Attorney, if we're agendized for this conversation, which I don't believe-
Okay, well, we're, we're, we're not. I just want you to know what my feeling is when you say we do RFPs all the time. So if you're okay, Mayor, I'm going to make a motion just to deny item number 13.
But wait, because there's a motion already on the floor with Mayor Pro Tem?
Okay.
Okay, and then Councilwoman.
Yeah, I just want to say I concur with Councilman Anthony that with all due respect, maybe you're seeing an appetite of the council to, before we do an RFP-
Yeah, Councilwoman, just so we can stay on the Fitch item, you, you guys can sidebar with Scott Adams about that direction for future items, but we just don't want to go far, too far afield, as Councilman Knutson pointed out about the open meeting law.
Okay, thank you. Let's go back because the motion's on the floor through Mayor Pro Tem. Let her speak to the motion.
Madam Mayor, so the motion- Madam Mayor, so the motion is on the floor to deny agenda item 13, but I just want to make it clear that we up here as the council approve of budgets and I know that you're used to doing all these RFPs and you generally don't get a kink in the wheel, but it is our job to make sure that we watch you and so we're just not happy with this and, and just want to say that there's a motion to deny on the floor, agenda item 13.
Okay, so I'm going to call on the motion. Please vote on the motion. The motion is to deny on agenda item, whatever it was. Forgot it, 13. Okay, and that motion passes, so we'll continue on with the process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to, ah, we are pulling forward agenda item 45, correct? Which is our report from Scott D. Adams, our City Manager, on emerging issues and thank you.
Good morning, Mayors, Members of the City Council, Scott Adams, City Manager. Like we did about three months ago, actually about seven weeks ago, I would like to use my emerging issues report agenda item to present to you an emergency ordinance for your consideration, given the time we're in and a need, an emergency need to, to create-
Okay, if I might, Mr. Adams, knowing what the next part of your sentence is going to be, again, going back to legal on this, as an emerging, emergency issue to bring forward since it's not on the agenda, under his aegis as City Manager, is he able to do this? Which hopefully is yes.
Yes, ma'am. City Manager Adams is going to do a little lead-in and then toss it over to me. We had it all ready to go.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. I, I'm not going to be handling this one. I'll, I'll let our legal team do this, but there is a, you should have before you hopefully a draft emergency ordinance that deals with some issues that, that are relative to the protests that have been happening and at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Jeff for explanation of this ordinance and your consideration.
Thank you, Scott. Jeff Dorcek, Deputy City Attorney. Mayor, council, again, before you for your consideration is bill number E 2020-1, an emergency ordinance relating to demonstrations, rallies, protests and similar events temporarily adding to the list of items already prohibited at those events, a number of containers of a certain type and size and certain wheeled vehicles or devices and providing for other related matters. As the mayor was hinting, we are able to pull this item today as an emergency item without any notice pursuant to NRS 241 because of unforeseen circumstances, particularly any unforeseen circumstances impairing health and safety of the public. As the council mentioned at the start of this meeting, events began to transpire on Monday, May 25th with the in custody death of George Floyd in Minneapolis, Minnesota. Subsequently, there were peaceful protests, but some of those peaceful protests over the weekend, specifically in Las Vegas, turned violent against both law enforcement and other people and public and private property. Because of that emergency situation, the violent demonstration portion over the weekend, we had already published the agenda for today's meeting. As a result, this item is an emergency item and an emergency ordinance which does not require typical notice under the open meeting law. Turning to the ordinance itself, it mirrors what the county is, I believe, also doing this morning, but with respect to our code, this ordinance will add provisions to Title 10, Chapter 88, specifically for people attending or participating in demonstrations, rallies, protests, public assemblies in public streets, public property or within 25 feet of those properties. People are no, will no longer be able to utilize backpacks, luggage and similar items because they pose a threat to law enforcement, property and other people at the demonstrations. On page two of the proposed ordinance are the specific additions. Section 1, subsection A, purses larger than 12 inches by 6 inches by 12 inches, coolers, briefcases, backpacks, fanny packs, cinch bags, luggage of any kind, computer bags, camera bags are prohibited from these public demonstrations. There are exceptions for medical devices necessary and for broadcast electronic and printed media equipment for those individuals. Also prohibited at these public demonstrations will be strollers, carts or vehicles propelled by humans, electricity or mechanical means. There's an exception there for vehicles that are medically necessary for a person, for example, a wheelchair. The emergency ordinance before you is set up to expire on July 31st, 2020 or upon- The emergency ordinance before you is set up to expire on July 31st, 2020, or upon a declaration by the mayor that the emergency that I referred to at the beginning, the demonstrations, violent, violent demonstrations have ceased. Other than that, everything is in order on this emergency item. The only other note I'll make is because it's an emergency ordinance pursuant to charter, we will need a unanimous 7-0 vote for it to pass.
And which I so move at this time? Yes, Mr. Attorney?
That's your motion. You can open it for discussion if there are comments or...
Okay. Let's open for discussion, councilmen and councilwoman. Did you have comment, too? Please, please.
I have a request, because I do think, one, this is an incredibly complicated situation, and I don't have any answers, so I'm not going to pretend I do, and I don't have any experience dealing with this level of anxiety in our community or the tension that we're all feeling. But the request that I'd have to make is because I do think there are people who want to make peaceful opposition to the world around them. I think they want to march. I think they want to make signs, and I want to be sensitive to that as well. And so my request is on this ordinance, which I'm very supportive of, but is there the opportunity to incorporate hours between 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM with the opportunity for the city manager to waive hours depending on new information that comes in? That allows for people during the daytime hours to make signs and walk down the streets and do what they feel is necessary, but still gives us the protection at nighttime, which is when I believe we're going to see the most amount of violence. It's a terrible time, but that's my request of this council is to consider the opportunity during daytime hours to allow people to have water bottles and make signs with their backpacks.
Okay, wait, no, 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 wait. Councilwoman Diaz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and my question is for legal as far as section 1, section B. It says strollers, carts, or any vehicle propelled by humans electrically or mechanically, and so I just want to make sure that we're not excluding folks that don't have any other means to attend a protest other than using their mobile cart. So would this preclude them from participating? Because I don't understand how it says unless a permit authorizes them. So what kind of a permit, or a mom that may want to take that opportunity and take their children with? So how are they going to be able to participate in peaceful manifestations if we're saying they can't take these things? So I just want to make sure we're not being exclusionary.
Great, thank you, Councilwoman.
Can we hold off? Can you just make note of both councilmen and councilwoman's comments? Because I'd like to get all the questions out rather than back and forth. Creates more questions. Please, go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem, and then I'll go down here.
Thank you. So the peaceful protest is not anything that we're questioning or with this ordinance. The problem that we're having here is we have folks putting ice bottles, bricks, things in places, in hidden places, and then putting them in their backpacks, putting them in their strollers. It's a problem. If it was just peaceful protest, we wouldn't be here today. We have a broken downtown, your ward, actually. So this is something that I think for the safety of all of our citizens and our minority-owned businesses and our regular businesses with the money and the tagging and the absolute disruption from despicable individuals that are using this peaceful protest as violence, I am, I am, I'm sorry, it really, it really affects my decision in saying, you know, maybe we should think about it.
Thank you. Councilman Creer.
Thank you. I'm in favor of the ordinance, and especially since it coincides with what the county says. I understand the concern of my colleague, Councilman Knutson, yet we have seen around the country that these protests, these, I'm not, hold on, these riots that are taking place within the peaceful protests are happening 24/7. And I know that the majority of the no-gooders come out at night, but Los Angeles and other parts of the country, you've seen where it's taking place during the day. So I think if we're going to do it, we need to do it. It's through July 31st. If things subside, we can always end this, and, but I think that something needs to be done in order to weed out the bad customers and, you know, weed and seed, weed out the bad and seed in the good. And so I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Anthony?
So just to be clear, this was passed unanimously by Clark County?
They're doing it today.
I believe they're obeying it.
Okay.
We don't have time to obey it.
Okay, I'm, I don't, I'm supporting the ordinance. Riots occur day and night. We need to get a handle on this stuff, and we can't have people going into violent protests with rocks and bricks and throwing them at cops. So I'll, I'm going to support this ordinance the way it is.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
I'm supporting this ordinance in the name of Police Officer Shay Mikalonis. I'm supporting this ordinance.
Thank you. Okay, so I have made a motion, and do we have anybody from, I forgot that this morning, to have you read that you can be calling in or emailing in? So please, if you would, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. On Item 45, Cecil Hughes is registering a protest to the item stating, not only does it step on the rights of the individuals protesting, it only serves for the police to indiscriminately detain anyone. It will not make anything safer, just take action on why they are protesting, not what they are protesting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I've made...
Ma'am, ma'am, down here, did you want me to?
Okay, yes, I'd like you to respond if you would.
Just so we circle back to everything that was brought up. Regarding Councilman Knutson's point, it would be, we could add an amendment setting that these provisions only apply to 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM daily unless suspended by delegation to the city manager, so that would be that type of amendment. Regarding Councilwoman Diaz's question, the stroller situation, I think that was kind of the, in particular, the stroller. The stroller, we could amend out, but this matches what the county proposed this morning and also what Metro requested. The other situation would be if an individual absolutely needed the stroller for medical purposes, obviously to push a child, you could bring a doctor's note. You could also more easily maybe talk to an officer if, for some reason, you were getting approached, basically say, well, I have a child in here and that type of thing, but ultimately, it would go down to officer discretion at that point.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, questions? Yes, councilmen and councilwoman.
Have there been conversations with Metro about this ordinance? Because I reached out to Bolden and...
Yes, there have been.
I just haven't had any feedback.
I've had a lot of feedback from Metro, and they're in support.
If I could respond to you, Mr. Knutson, yes, with the undersheriff and the sheriff, which is where actually they were for it, because it's very difficult, as you know, even a curfew, while I'm sure there's been talk about curfews, it's very hard to take care of rioting and the problems that we have from the looting and everything else, and then go ahead and enforce, and it makes it easier. The simpler it is, the easier visually can help us remain safe, and that's why, and as Councilman Anthony said, this is to August, July 31st, unless, isn't that the date on it, Mr. Dorcek?
Yes, ma'am, July 31st, or if earlier you declare that the situation involving violent demonstrations are over, you can cancel it per the ordinance. The other I wanted to point out, Senior Assistant City Attorney Brian Scott mentioned a good point. We could modify stroller in some way if you wanted to go down that road with an amendment. We could craft some language that would require basically someone who should be in the stroller, needs to be in the stroller for you to have a stroller, but that, there's obviously a motion on the floor without any amendment.
Well, and two, when you talk about bringing children in crowds that immediately law enforcement or someone else might have to immediately say evacuate and people run, you better not have a stroller there because your baby will be thrown on the sidewalk. So I think this is an alert for people. It makes it very simple. We're doing this one thing for a short period of time. Here we are, June, and it's just going to the end of July, and so we can feel through it if you're really getting phone calls of many protesters with children and they need a stroller. I, as a parent of four little children at one point, I would be very hesitate, hesitant to take my child in a stroller in an enormous crowd where panic and evacuation, which happened at Scottsdale, recently happened with a calm protest walk. And then evacuate immediately everybody over bullhorns, and so there you are. So just a thought, and we can come back to it, too.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to make it clear that with everything that's been ongoing, of course, public safety is of the utmost import matter. It matters to me, it matters to my ward, it matters to keep my residents and everyone safe. I'm not saying that I'm against this ordinance, but I want to make sure that we are not going to be legally liable because we might be infringing upon people's rights to exercise their First Amendment. Now, with Councilman Knutson's proposition of it applying 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM, that is more amenable because that is during the hours that we've seen the uptick in the violence. But if this was going to indiscriminately be applied throughout the day, we are kind of letting some people not be participants in certain peaceful demonstrations, and I think my comments have been taken in a different direction. I said, I'm really concerned about those who have disabilities, who have to get around being pushed either in a wheelchair or them themselves in a mechanical chair. And so it kind of, that point of B, I just want to make sure that we're not being exclusionary in that then people may sue us for saying, you're taking away my rights. So that's where my point was coming and trying to shed light and making sure that we were...
You were so clear, and I think everybody's very sensitive, and I think in here is a medical device, a wheelchair is included here. I think what this makes it is simple. I mean, it's sort of like in the football games around the country now, you have to have anything you bring in in a clear, visible, plastic bag in order to keep down problems for safety. And so it's much simpler for at least the next, was it, 31 and 30, 70 days? And we can always add to it, but I think your sensitivity and councilmen's are spot-on. We are one people, all of us, and whether we have little people that want to participate and a parent wants to show a child, there is always a risk there, and that's all we're saying. So if, in fact, you know, you, safety is first, which we voted on at the retreat, I think this is an effort there, and it's not saying it's perfect, nothing's perfect ever, and your points are well-stated, and you've made a great record for them. So I think, and certainly our legal...
Correct, Mayor. What you mentioned, legally, that would be our interpretation, too. The exception under subpart B would permit things like a wheelchair, a jazzy, a rascal, things like that.
So at this point, yes, anything else you wanted?
I just, I want to be clear why we can't go to 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM is simply because during the day, these nasty individuals that are making pretend they're peaceful protesters are literally plotting things to throw at our officers all night long. So every single one of us on this council, we stand with George Floyd, I take a breath every morning for George Floyd, we stand with Shay. We, so understand, we want to protect our community, period, and protecting our community means we don't give them the option of coming down and hiding bricks, ice bottles, and, you know, other things. So I support this, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so there, if I make, and then go for the vote right now on the motion here that I've just, based on what our attorney, Dorcek, had read, that that's my motion on this, and so you can proceed with your report. There's a motion to approve, what are we calling it, the emergency ordinance?
Yes, ma'am.
Addition? Okay, please vote and please post. Thank you, the motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Dorcek.
Could I clarify on that? I, because I got a little lost there. That was approved without any amendments. Is that correct?
Correct, sir.
Okay.
Okay, and if you'll please continue with your report. Thank you.
All right, I will make my emerging issue report fairly brief. I really wanted to touch on two things that are very current right now. First is our reopening plans. We have, as a city now, called virtually every one of our employees back, but a few of our hourly employees, and those are the ones that, that were part of our decrement or budget cuts, but all of our full-time employees are now back. They are planning the reopening of all of our facilities. As you know, we've, and I think I stated this at the last meeting, we've reopened City Hall, the DSC, there's an orderly process in how you get into the buildings, but we are open for business. We will be publishing, I think a good share of our closures occurred in our Parks and Recreation Department and those facilities. We will be posting online today the reopening plan for those facilities, so I would encourage our citizens to go to our website to find those reopening plans, but some have already opened so that we can start a summer, Vegas Strong Summer Academy. There's a couple facilities that open for that. And then over the next two weeks, we will be opening on a staged basis other facilities, pools, community centers, so forth. We will not be opening senior centers. We believe that our seniors are part of that vulnerable population, that if you remember, we closed first, and we will probably open last to make sure that they're safe as part of the reopening plans. We will be expanding the eligible uses for our business assistance...
Excuse me, Mr. Scott Adams, could you answer, are, is, are the pools that we operate that are indoor, that are used by young people? You're saying they can't, you know, we're closing senior centers and anything, do little, anything that's senior, that makes sense because they're the vulnerable population. But any of the pools that are operated in the parks that are used by young people, either school age or in these, now we're moving into the summer, can they not remain open?
Let's start with that for the record. Mayor, we are opening up the pools. The delay isn't getting lifeguards there. We've been actively recruiting and training them, getting them certified to be out there. So we've got a bunch of them that are opening up on June 8th, and the rest of them opening up June 15th, that's where getting lifeguards available to go ahead and put them in place.
And are, is that the do little one that we've remodeled the center? Is that going to be open, too, here in the heart of the city?
All of them are going to be open. We're opening up all pools. It's just going to take us a little bit of time to get lifeguards out there, but some will open June 8th, and the rest will open June 15th.
And then what is the process for the family? Do they make a reservation? How do, how do they access the inside pools? Because obviously, distance separation and everything you've been working so hard to keep us in line with. What is, what's the notification, or will you let us know after?
Mayor, we have put provisions in place to be in compliance with the Governor's Directive under Phase 2, which limits the capacity of the pool, so all those provisions have been placed. We do have a plan in place for each of our facilities.
Okay. Would you share those with council through the Internet or something and let us know?
We shall. We'll make it available to all of you.
And the dates of which ones will open when?
We will. As the city manager noticed, we will be posting that publicly today. We did provide you all a copy yesterday. We emailed it to you during briefings, and so we'll be posting that publicly for everybody to know, and I'll send you a copy of the plans for each facility of how we're going to manage to be within the Governor's Directive.
And the interior pool in Ward 2 that's used for competitive swimming and everything else, that one, what is the name of, or is it Ward 4? Ward 2, I think.
That's, it's Pavilion Pool Center, and that one's opening June 5th.
Councilwoman Seaman, your name of your pool?
Oh, the name of my pool is, it's at the Veterans Memorial.
Right, okay.
It's Pavilion Pool Center, and it's opening June 5th.
Great, thank you. Wonderful. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Adams.
That's okay. The other thing we're doing is expanding the eligible uses for the business assistance program. So if you were initially denied under that program, you might want to contact our Economic and Urban Development Department for reconsideration. As a business, we still have funds available, and we're going to open the program up even wider to some of the businesses that initially were ineligible uses to make that program available to more businesses.
At the same fee?
Yeah, under the same exact, it's for all of that opening expense that a business is incurring, that's required under the Phase 2 mandate, the physical modifications to your space, PPE, all the kinds of things that are required. It's the same parameters for business size. I believe it's 3 through 25 employees. It's focused on the smaller businesses, but we're just opening up to a wider range of uses of types of businesses than we previously rolled the program out to. The other thing that we're looking forward to this week is the opening of downtown, of the casinos and Fremont Street Experience. So I think it's been a long time coming that we've been shut down for so long, and now we're seeing our casinos in our downtown area come back online. The other thing I wanted to touch on was security. Given all the things that are going on... wanted to touch on was security. Given all the things that are going on, and the escalation of the protests to a level of violence that we haven't seen heretofore, we are going to be very careful in making sure that our city facilities and employees are not in harm's way. So for example, there is a, an event planned for around City Hall this evening. So it's our intent to close City Hall early to get all of our vehicles and employees out of the area prior to the event, so that our employees will be safe. We'll be doing the same thing at Do Little on Friday, and we're going to continuously monitor the events as they're planned and as they're occurring, because we don't always know when they're going to occur. There's pop-up events that have been occurring, and we'll be doing the same thing as we get information about that happening.
Thank you. Yes, questions? Mayor Protam.
Mr. Adams, you're a really bad gangster. You do not tell the bad guys what you're doing, but I, I understand what you're just saying.
Well, that's fine. But I, I, we have a public that we, I just got done saying we've opened City Hall, but I'm saying, today, we're going to close because of an event that could put our employees and their personal property, cars and vehicles, at risk. We have, and I don't have any choice but to do that, given what's been going on.
Thank you. Thank you. I think we're okay. Yes, councilman?
Mr. Adams, I would just reiterate, I think you and your team have done an amazing job in very unprecedented, challenging times, that there, there is no up or down. It's a right or wrong. It's very difficult for everyone. So I'm proud to be a part of the city team. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Echoed. Thank you very much.
Mayor?
Yes, councilman.
Jeff, will this be an appropriate time to bring up some of the issues that I happened to bring up yesterday, like curfews and National Guards and stuff like that, under emergency, merging issues?
Where do you want to go with it? Do you want to kind of just tell Scott some points, or?
Well, just make some comments and see if anybody else up here wants to make a comment.
We should avoid any discussion between members. I mean, if you want to kind of direct some points at Scott, that's what we generally allow this item for.
Okay. All right. Well, then I'll, I'll do the best I can in that area. Is that, is that okay, Mayor?
That's fine.
So I, I just want to preface a couple of things. I spent 29 years with Metro, and what happened to George Floyd was, over a week ago, was an absolute atrocity. And I talked to all my fellow retired cops, and every one of them said it was not only excessive force, it was criminal. And the, the justice system stepped up. He was fired. He's being criminally prosecuted. That's exactly what should have happened and is happening. And I'm, I'm glad that's happening, and just about every cop is going to say the same thing. After that, there were some peaceful protests, and that's good, that's a good thing. We have the First Amendment right to peaceably assemble. And that, that started, unfortunately, the, the criminals, the anarchists, the looters, the rioters took over, and they started destroying cities. And eventually, it came to Las Vegas. We started to see this criminal mob activity here that took over these peaceful protests. And it really came to head for me yesterday morning when I woke up, and I saw that an officer had been shot in the head. And some officers had to shoot somebody during the night that pointed a gun at them. And this was getting absolutely out of control. And it really pissed me off. So I went on a, I went on social media, and I started asking for a curfew. I started asking for the National Guard to come out. I'm glad to see they were out last night. I started asking for more arrests, no bail, open up Gene Prison, put these thugs in Gene Prison, and hold them there until this calms down. And I was doing that because I was worried about last night. And I actually talked about having a special meeting yesterday to talk about some of these things, as well as a curfew, because I was worried about last night. But we couldn't have that meeting because of the, of the public notice. We just couldn't do it. Luckily, last night was peaceful. We didn't have any pro, we had some peaceable protests, which was great. Nothing got out of control. So I, I just wanted to, I'm not sure if we need a curfew tonight. I can't call for a curfew. Only the mayor can do that.
And I have to respond, even though we've been advised, no discussion here, but I have been in touch with the sheriff and undersheriff from the first moment of the first day, and in dialogue. And that was my first question to the sheriff. And there are reasons why not. And so we've been operating, know that the top law enforcement is our sheriff, and it is not for us, I don't believe, to rise above that and make decisions when we don't know all the things that are happening in Southern Nevada around the state, and he does. And so the curfew piece, there, there are so many reasons, and I don't want to take time from this meeting, and I don't want to curtail your voice, but the reason for the, no curfew, the reason for this backpack, this is all coming through Metro to us with their evaluation of their top command, saying, as I call on behalf of all wards for the city as the mayor, here are things that are coming to me. Here's what we're suggesting. What do you think? And so just want to assure you that I am in constant touch with law enforcement.
Okay. Well, that's how I was going to end my statement. I'm going to, I'm just going to trust you and the sheriff to, to keep an eye on things. And if a curfew is needed, I, I hope you put that in place. I hope we don't need it. I hope we don't have any more riots. I don't, I hope we, we don't have any more buildings being burned and people beaten up. But we can't tolerate this anymore.
Right.
We just, we just need to use, in my experience, these mob activities need to be met with a show of force. And it starts with a curfew when it's needed. So I'm glad to hear that you and the sheriff are talking about implementing a curfew if we need it, because we can't tolerate this anymore.
And it's top command. And that's where I call on every one of us as a protester, peaceful protester, to make our voices heard against these looters and these rioters. It's up to us to get the handle and help, because Metro can't do everything, nor our marshals. So anyway, your report was very informative. We're on our road back, we hope. And we have in place something if you are advised that you are going to go into a shutdown. Again, you have been doing this with your team, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm going to do one thing a little bit out of order here before we go to Agenda Item 30, because it's, while it's not a whole lot of stuff, I want to call up Mr. Robert Summerfield and Mary McElhone. Out of order.
Good morning.
Thank you both very much. I'll ask you to make some comments first. But my heart is broken again. I don't know how many pieces it can go into. And most definitely, I heard the sad news for those of us who love this lady, who's been with us a long time, who's going to be going into retirement, Mary McElhone. How many years have you been with us?
Mayor Goodman, it's been eight and a half years.
And has been such, such a stellar addition, so wise, so smart, so listening, capable, communicative, thorough, patient, having to go through so many doorways that, oh my gosh, nobody'd even pass through them, what you've done. So I'm going to turn to Mr. Summerfield for a comment. And I'm so sorry, we're going to really miss you, and I don't even know when it's going to be effective. So everything, if you would share with council.
Absolutely, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council for taking this moment. While there's been some very heavy things that the community's dealing with, this is a moment to celebrate a career. Ms. McElhone has been with the city, as she said, for eight years. She's been my deputy planning director since Mr. Adams made me your director of planning. And I could not have done the work that we've been able to do without her assistance. Before that, she worked for the state for the bulk of her career and helped make the state, in the different departments that she worked with, work ever so more efficiently than they did before. We owe a lot to Ms. McElhone and her leadership in our licensing division. And it's come out so much during this time period. She has been working with the community throughout the shutdown, throughout the phased openings of businesses, helping to coordinate our activities at the city, trying to get as many businesses in some form of operational capacity as possible while they weren't able to have people in their doors. And so it's just a testimony to her as a person and as an employee. And so thank you for taking this moment to kind of celebrate her career. That's very appreciated.
Thank you. I think that, that's beautifully said. My heart's broken, but I'm sure is, is there, are theirs. But to celebrate your career and everything you've done to, for so many here in the community, the microphone's yours. Tell us why you're deserting.
Thank you, Mayor Goodman. Well, as Robert said, I got my start with the state. I was actually a state employee, and moved on to the city about eight and a half years ago. But more than half of the time I've spent as a government employee has been either working for or with elected officials. And I know that you all have very, very tough jobs, and that decisions are never made lightly. And it has truly been an honor and a privilege to work with each and every one of you. It has also been an honor and a privilege to work with our community, whether it's the businesses or the residents, helping businesses get licensed, helping them work through their issues, and more recently, really helping them the last three months through this coronavirus and the shutdown, and who's essential and who's not essential, and who can operate and who can't operate. It's, it's been a tough three months. But most of all, I'm very, very grateful for all the people that I have worked with in the city and in the state. I have held some really great jobs, and I have really worked with some really awesome individuals, whether they were coworkers, employees, staff members, or even the staff of the city council members. It really has been a really great ride. But I have to tell you that after the last three months, I truly am ready. Thank you.
Thank you, and you deserve it. And I might also add to your list of many dues, the highly confidential issues with which Mary has to work, and the 24/7 of her job is just remarkable how you've handled it all. And you always look rested, and you always have energy, and you're always there for all of us. So I'm sure that we all are just very grateful and wish you a wonderful retirement. And you better not take a job in somewhere else.
Mayor?
No, I have no plans to do that.
Mayor?
No, no, no. You do what you want to.
Are you taking opportunities to, to thank you? I, I just want to thank you for all that you do. I tell you, it is very nice to work with you on issues, especially for the fact that you give us the facts, right? You don't come in saying, "Hey, this is what I think." This is, you come in and say, "Well, this is the facts. This is the history. This is going on." What do you want to do, councilman? And I really appreciate that. And, you know, not only is your personality going to be missed coming into the office, your knowledge is going to be missed. And I think that is hugely important when things like this happen, because you have an institutional knowledge from working for the Gaming Commission and working in different facets of, around our state. And you can't replace experience. And so you will be definitely missed from that standpoint, as well as for the fact that I think that you're a wonderful person. I've, I just thank you for your dedication to our entire state and not just to the city of Las Vegas. Thank you.
Beautifully said. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I just want to say, Mary, I've been here 11 months, but it's been already a pretty wild ride, with you having to come to our office on multiple occasions to brief us, to provide the information for us to make informed decisions as sitting council members. And know that I've grown very fond and fond of you, and also respect the amount of work and diligence that you've poured into your job. I know you've been there for us when we have, have had community meetings. You've been a neutral party that can then come back and point out things that sometimes, because we're so in favor or against, we're not seeing. And so it's just been so helpful in my journey transitioning in this new role to have you there, educating me, informing me about things that we need to do for the greater good of Ward Three. And so on behalf of my ward and the entire city, I know you've been keeping things running smoothly and effectively, and you've been holding the hands of many business owners through this downturn in the economy and uncertain times. And know that I've received praises for that as well. So thank you so much. And cheers to your next adventure and the new chapter in your life, because I'm sure it's going to be awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. And Councilwoman Seaman?
So my staff and I want to thank you, Mary. And it seems a little unfair that we only got to work with you for 11 months. And most of all, we're going to miss your beautiful smile. We wish you the best.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman?
First of all, I've only been in this role for 11 months, but I was a city employee for a very long time. And I've worked with a lot of elected officials, and this is a whole lot of crazy up here. So I am very much appreciative that you are calm. And it was really wonderful for 11 months, hearing advice and guidance and direction from you. And I will miss it because you are calm in the sea of crazy. So thank you very much for everything.
Nice. Mayor Protam?
I just don't know what I'm going to do without you. I mean, sometimes Tom even fields your calls for you. Mr. Carrigan will call me and say, "If you'd just, just, she's on vacation, just call me." But I just have to tell you that I, I really appreciate everything that you do for our businesses, for our small businesses, for making everything work, for getting people in business when people, you know, are trying to put them out of business. The value that you've added to so many lives outside of council, the businesses in all of the cities, how you made everything work, and how you shut down bad businesses. I mean, I wish I could make an ordinance so you couldn't leave. But I just want to tell you that you're very loved. You're very loved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we're going to go to business, but we wish you well. Your smile will be with us forever. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's why this city works so well. Its employees like that wonderful woman. And so it doesn't just happen with a click of an eye or something. It really takes a lot of wonderfully educated, trained, experienced, good-hearted, and trustworthy people. So, Mary, we wish you well. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 30. We're going to open 30 through 33 together, and I will read them first. Number, Agenda Item 30, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the City of Las Vegas Second Amendment HUD, or HUD, Fiscal Year 2019-2020 Action Plan That Secures Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, the CARES Act, Funds Totalling $4,900,673. And Related Item Number 31, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding An Allocation Of $3,082,302 In Community Development Block Grants, CDBG, CARES Act, CDBG-CV Funds To The City Of Las Vegas. And Related Item Number 32, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding An Allocation Of $280,792 In Housing Opportunities For Persons With AIDS, Which Is Hopwa, CARES Act, Hopwa-CV Funds To The City Of Las Vegas. And Related Item 33, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding An Allocation Of $1,537,579 In Emergency Solution Grants, That's ESG, CARES Act, ESG-CV Funds To The City Of Las Vegas By The United States Department Of Housing And Urban Development HUD, HUD, To Prevent, Prepare For, And Respond To The Coronavirus Pandemic. This is in reference to all wards. And so we have our wonderful head of our community services here. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and Council. Kathy Thomas, Director for the Office of Community Services. I do not have a formal presentation, but I am available to answer questions, should you have any.
Wonderful. We thank you for everything. You've been able to keep your head above water and putting in place for our homeless, the courtyard, the corridor, hope, everything that you're involved in. So are there any comments, questions, or should we just move ahead? I think we're ready to move it ahead. We'll just take them one at a time, or is there something else? Ready to roll. Okay. So I will ask, let's see, so that's Ward Five mostly. No, I'm at Ward Three. Ward Five and Ward Three mostly.
Wards One, Three, and Five for the CDBG. Wards One, Three, and Five for the CDBG enhancement, but the other dollars are actually citywide. So Emergency Solutions Grant and HOPWA dollars are spent citywide.
Okay. So what we're going to do is I'm going to give every, One, Three, and Five, a motion one on each. And then we'll do our, number 33 will come from another council person. So let's start with Councilwoman Diaz. Would you make a motion on Agenda Item 30, please?
Would love to. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve Agenda Item 30.
Thank you very much. There's a motion. Please vote. And please post. That's unanimous, of course. Councilman Knutson, please. Would you take on Number 31, please, in the motion?
Mayor, for item Number 31, I motion to approve.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 31. Please vote and please post. That motion also carries unanimously. And Agenda Item 32, Councilman Creer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I make a motion for approval of Item 32.
Thank you very much. There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 32. Do we have people? Yes, we do.
Mayor, I'm sorry. We do have a comment for Item 32.
Okay, we're going to read the item. We're going to hold that for one second before we vote.
This comment is from Morgan Shaw. Item 32 states he's concerned. On behalf of Nevada Legal Services, I encourage the city to acquire the agency-awarded HOPWA-CV funds to prioritize housing assistance for those currently receiving HOPWA rent assistance through programs that are terminating this year. Please see my email. And we will enclose the email as backup.
Okay, thank you very much. So if you'll just restate it, even though you already said it.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve Item 33.
No, 32.
32.
Perfect. There's a motion on 32 now. Please vote. And please post. That motion carries unanimously. And Mayor Protem may have a motion on 33, which is all wards.
Madam Mayor, I motion to approve Agenda Item 33.
Thank you very much. Please vote and please post. And that motion also carries. Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, we will now move on to Agenda Item 34. Discussion for Possible Action Regarding The Selection Of A Finalist For The Position Of City Attorney.
Good morning, Mayor. Councilmembers. For the record, Vince Zamora, Acting Director of Human Resources. Today's item-
And with you. And with you.
Oh, Mr. Davis.
Good morning, Mayor. Councilwoman Morgan Davis, Assistant City Attorney.
Thank you.
Today's item is a discussion for possible action regarding the selection of a finalist for the position of city attorney. As a recap, at the May 20 council meeting, council approved a motion to conduct an internal search for the city attorney. Consistent with that direction, HR opened and completed an internal recruitment which identified one highly qualified applicant, Mr. Brian Scott. At today's, consistent with that direction, HR opened it and the process was open for seven days. Mr. Scott was the sole applicant. We've reviewed all the qualifications and again, his background, education, and experience exceed those of the job description that we have. Today's agenda item describes a selection of the finalists, but does not include the applicant's name because the application period ended before the agenda items were due for posting for today's meeting. With that said, your motion options include moving to name Mr. Scott as the finalist. HR will then place an item on the 617 Agenda for the Appointment of Mr. Scott as City Attorney, or moving to appoint Mr. Scott as the next city attorney now. HR then will place an item on the 617 Agenda for ratification of the appointment with the appointee's name as required by the open meeting law. In between that timeframe, between now and that timeframe, HR will work with City Attorney's Office and Mr. Scott to develop the contract terms to present to you for ratification at the 617 meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Zamora. Do we have any comments from online or any other way?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We do. From Attorney Lynette Boggs Perez. As a former Assistant City Manager and City Councilwoman for the City of Las Vegas, I'd like to encourage all members of the city council to unanimously appoint Brian Scott as your next city attorney. I had the opportunity to work with Attorney Scott in both of my capacities with the city. I'm confident you will not be able to find a more dedicated public servant, a person who has dedicated most of his professional career in services to the citizens of Las Vegas, especially in planning and zoning matters through the decades, and who is just an all-around kind and highly intelligent individual. His professional achievements speak for themselves, as does his contribution to the legal community nationally and to the state of Nevada. With the challenges still facing the Las Vegas community, this would be a wise choice. Kind regards, Lynette Boggs Perez.
Thank you very much. And with that, I would like to move to select Brian Scott as the finalist unless there's any other discussion or any other recommendations. So please, Councilwoman Seaman?
Yeah, I just have a statement. In my time on the city council, I've developed a great amount of respect for Brian Scott as a member of the city attorney's office. Brian has done an outstanding job addressing any legal issues that have come through my office. After meeting with him to discuss his vision for dealing with the ongoing Badlands litigation the city is facing, I am confident that he shares my desire to see this issue resolved in the best possible manner. For these reasons, I am proud to support Brian Scott for city attorney. I know he's going to do a fabulous job.
Thank you very much. Councilman Knutson?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. And Mr. Scott, I have, one, I have a great deal of admiration for you. I had a great deal of admiration for Brad Jerwic as well. And so my relationship with Brad has gone over many, many years. And all of those times where we've interacted, there's been a great amount of debate. We oftentimes come from very different places. And I feel it's the conflict between, that we discuss openly, that is in the best interest of the city because we both absolutely adore and love this city. And so, one, my request is to continue that with you because I do like to debate and I like to go back and forth because I think it's in the best interest of the city. And I like evolving my own thinking about how I can better serve. The second request, and this is with the council's permission, my request would be, I think there's a large degree of potential turmoil in the city attorney's office as there is in the rest of the city because of the amount of, one, people retiring and new people coming in. I would, prior to the next council meeting, love to see your thoughts around succession planning. I think it's important to start those conversations on the day you start the job. I'd also, consistent with what we do with the city manager, like to be able to see that any deputy attorneys, the number two or the number three, get ratified by city council. And that would be my request of the city council, that the number twos also, once appointed or asked by Brian Scott, get ratified by city council. And I'd like to see that planned prior to the contract as well.
And that probably has to do with an ordinance that comes out of your department if, in fact, Mr. Scott passes and then the agreement's made. So it is certainly a suggestion and well heard. And I'm sure Mr. Scott has heard it as well as any other legals that are here in it. So, thank you. And Councilwoman, was there anything? Please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Scott received nothing but praises supporting you in this new role and position. I think that your commitment to the city, you being here with us so many years and not wanting to retire, like Ms. McLaHone speaks that, you still have this passion for serving us. And we, as sitting council members, are not, you know, we're not anything without sound legal advice. And so you're here to protect us as a city, you're here to protect the residents and make sure that we're always vetting our processes through the legal lens, which is so important. So I commend you for your courage in stepping up into this new role. And I also look forward, like Councilman Knutson says, and you creating pathways and making sure that we are growing a strong legal team so that as the years go by, we don't have to feel sad when you're going away because you're leaving an amazingly strong CAO office. So thank you so much for stepping up.
Nicely said. Councilman Creer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to welcome you, and I don't want to belabor the inevitable, but it has been a pleasure working with you. Two years on the Planning Commission, you were there 2:00, 3:00 in the morning. You're sitting right there with your banana pudding with us all. But more importantly, you've always been available, you have always been active and engaging. And anytime that I've had a concern on anything, you have been readily responsive to any questions that I have. And I thank you for that. And I look forward to continuing that conversation with you because I think it's vitally important for you to be engaging, to give us your unadulterated, unbiased opinion of what the law states and then let the board decide what they want to do. You know, one of the things also which is important, which is what you bring to the position, is that you have a very high level of respect within the community. I have not spoken to anybody within the community, legal community, nonlegal community, that has said anything disparaging about you. Quite the opposite. It has been very positive and that's very hard to do. You know, a person who was born and raised in this community, grew up in North Las Vegas, attended Rancho High School, and has worked his way up through the community and to establish yourself in such a high esteemed level for the community, I think it's very admirable. And so I applaud you and I welcome you and look forward to continued relationships with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. So one of the unique positions that you're in, Brian, is you can retire. And I was a little concerned about that because I think you're going to make a great city attorney, but I didn't want you being around just for, you know, a short period of time. I want you here for a while because that's the way it should be. So we talked about a little bit of a time commitment. So I'd like you to come up and put on the record what we negotiated.
Mayor and Council, for the record, Brian Scott, Senior Assistant City Attorney. Councilman, yes, we did. And yes, I was eligible for retirement next year. And when this job came available to me, I thought it was a new challenge and something I'd been looking forward to for a long time. So I've committed to you and to this council that I'll stay for at least four more years and longer if you like and longer if you want me and if I still feel the passion for the job. And I think this is an opportunity for me to now re-energize myself. I've been the Assistant City Attorney for 15 years now. And so it seemed like, even though Mr. Jerwic's been here for 28 years, it seemed like he would never retire. So at this point in time, I have committed to another four years here at the city.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, please.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. So I've been communicating with a lot of folks this morning, including my friend, Aaron Ford, who we served together up in Carson City, and he's the Attorney General that you will be working with. And he had expressed, he was looking forward to working together with you. And I expressed, so am I because he's a pit bull. And then our planning, our Chair, our Planning Commissioner Chairman was literally here all morning, Lou DeSalvio, who's my chairman for the ward. And he just wanted me to make sure to tell you that as much as he supports you being our city attorney, you will be very, very missed at the Planning Commission meetings.
Thanks.
So, there you go, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And just knowing you, and I'd like you to turn around, face the back wall so everybody that's looking from the video cameras, this gentleman, when I met him, did not have any gray hair.
Well, I don't have any hair, Mayor. I just have gray in the beard.
Whether that, I think he's trying to look very mature today in his vote and older than really he is. But, you know, I do hear about Brad Jerwic, and I've known him over 40 years, just a source of legal information, takes on any challenge with a strong spine, will go in to fight the wolves, but yet will do it with a very even, open hand to serve all people all the time and just to give us the best information. And as I have and have been asked by many of my colleagues here, what advice would you give me coming into a new position? I always say the first thing is legal. Go to legal first. You can't, you have an idea, you want to do something. If it doesn't pass muster, you put the entire city in terrible jeopardy. So this is a huge responsibility, you're following in enormous footsteps. But I know that Brad got to a point after his 28 years and Dean Moore in the practice of the energy that he felt to the law, he was loyal to it, but I could just sort of see him not have what you are now speaking to, that this has revitalized you.
It has.
And Brad, of course, is going to continue to help us in some of our development issues. I know he's spoken with our city manager and has done so much, the Healing Garden for sure of one October was something that he was so involved in. And he's been working so hard in Ward One with trying to be a calm helper and resolving the issue out there in Ward Two, excuse me, in the Badlands, and in so many other ways. And so the variety of what you're undertaking certainly gives you, when you have some fabulous, fabulous legal staff with you, I mean, just incredible. So I have made a motion now, which I'm going to ask everybody to vote on after Mr. Zamora makes a comment, because I could see that, but just think you'll do an outstanding job. And I echo Councilman Knutson's request to make sure that as you appoint or look to appoint your assistant levels, that you, at least in the conversation, not maybe mandating that we approve, but that's your decision. You're the head of the department should this pass and you agree on a salary in this time of tightening our belt. Did you get that, Mr. Adams? I'm watching your money. We just saved, you can't have the $88,000 that we temporarily-
Well, I don't, okay.
So, but given that, Mr. Zamora, please, before I call for the vote.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, for the record, Vince Zamora. I just want to make sure that this motion is going to move to appoint Mr. Scott as the next city attorney. And then we will have a follow-up item on the 16th Agenda for ratification of that appointment and the contract terms.
I think everything's right, but the date. Is it the 16th or 17th?
The 17th, 17th, I'm sorry.
So, see, I saved you already.
You did. You saved me a day. Right. I appreciate that.
No, if he had signed it to the wrong day, he would forget your salary.
Mayor, down here, Jeff Dorcas, Deputy City Attorney. Just working with the Clerk's Office and clear up something that Acting Director Zamora mentioned. Your original motion, we would prefer that you keep with that one, which is to name Mr. Scott the finalist because that's what our agenda is set for. Clerk's Office is going to have some issues and I know Mr. Scott's aware that that was one option. So it'll be finalist by motion today and then the official appointment comes in two weeks.
Thank you very much, which is June 17. Correct. So that's my motion. Please vote and please post.
Madam Mayor, for clarity, I just heard my colleague Seaman say, I thought there were three options and one option would be to appoint him today to the position.
We are-
No, we're saying that we're making him a finalist and then on the 17th. Now, it seems like on the 17th, we would approve the contract, but today we would make him the city attorney today. And then you go into discussion on the contract and then we would come in and approve the contract. That's what I heard from your conversation. Is that valid?
We are moving to appoint with a ratification of the appointment on the 17th.
Okay, I heard finalist.
And the finalist, my motion is, he is the one's finalist. He's it.
I'm with you. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you have to vote now. Councilman Creer?
Okay. Okay. Mayor?
Yes, please.
So if this is approved today, is Brian Scott our city attorney today?
No, he's got to work through that.
Okay. Okay. Brad is still our city attorney. In two weeks, we would actually do the appointment.
That's correct.
Got that?
He is the finalist. There's no other finalist, but then we have to negotiate, you know, his vacation time, suit allowance, all those things that-
So the next two weeks, call Brad. Don't call Brian.
Absolutely.
Call him lots.
Okay, and that motion carried. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to make sure that you see, Mr. Scott, how all of us are very, very eager to have you as our city attorney. And I do look forward to what Councilman Knutson and the mayor said about getting your attorney pro tem, right? So I'm very excited to talk about that.
And I want to thank you all. You know, I've been with the city for 29 years, excuse me, 24 years. I've been a lawyer for 29 years. And I really do appreciate all of your confidence in me and that unanimous vote. I really look forward to working, continually working with you all. Thank you.
Wonderful. Okay, we'll move on to Agenda 35. Resolution R 262020, Discussion For Possible Action Regarding, is this the one I can't? No, this is okay. Ratifying Temporary Actions To Assist Businesses In The Form Of Grants, Authorization, Specific Business Activities Not Otherwise Permitted. This is $4 million of the CARES Act Special Revenue- This is $4 million of the CARES Act Special Revenue Fund in reference to all wards. And Mr. Adams, please.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, Members of City Council, Scott Adams, City Manager. Again, this is another one of several resolutions that I'm presenting to you that would ratify actions that I've taken during this pandemic, during the emergency declaration, that we're coming back for approval and ratification on. Because there were numerous things that pertain to this resolution, I'm going to read verbatim what I've been given, so that the record has it very clearly, what you're ratifying. You know, as the public is well aware from two previous resolutions passed unanimously by this council during the COVID-19 pandemic, every department and office of this city government is working diligently to ease bureaucratic and economic burdens faced by City of Las Vegas residents, visitors, and businesses, while also ensuring first and foremost, public health and safety. To that end, at my direction, multiple departments have taken additional administrative actions in just the past few weeks to assist local businesses and continue the city's efforts to reopen our economy quickly and safely. The city and city council have already publicized many of these business and consumer-friendly actions, but I now come before the city council with a resolution to ratify and authorize the following temporary actions. First, the Business Preparedness Grant Program. This new grant program is available to eligible businesses to assist them with funding expenditures associated with preparing their places of businesses to reopen and operate in compliance with the State of Nevada and the Southern Nevada Health District COVID-19 directives and guidelines. The maximum grant amount is $4,000 per business license and will be distributed on a first-come, first-served basis, and we've committed $4 million of our federal CARES Act to this program. Second, the Outdoor Dining and Sidewalk Sales in Downtown Las Vegas. This temporary action allows downtown restaurant and retail establishments to conduct their business within the public sidewalk area without an encroachment license or additional permitting. Our Dine Out Downtown Program. This action temporarily closes certain public thoroughfares for the purpose of placing and managing city-installed dining accommodations. These dining accommodations include tables, chairs, and shade canopies, and available for any person to use for outdoor dining when ordering from downtown dining establishments. Package Alcohol Delivery. This temporary action allows a business with a liquor store or brew pub license to deliver alcoholic beverages sealed by the manufacturer after obtaining a time-limited package alcohol delivery permit. Our Curbside Package Alcohol Sales. This temporary action allows a business with a liquor store or brew pub license to allow curbside pickup of alcoholic beverages sealed by the manufacturer after obtaining a time-limited alcohol curbside package alcohol permit. And then finally, Outdoor Activity Areas for Commercial Centers. This temporary action permits tenants of commercial centers to conduct their business in outdoor areas, onsite sidewalk and parking areas, without a temporary commercial permit for parking lot, sidewalk, or sidewalk sales, or any additional permitting. So, these are the things that we did during the last few weeks, and I present this resolution to you for your approval.
Thank you very much. Any discussion comments before we move for approval?
Mayor, can I make a comment down here? Jeff Dorke, Deputy City Attorney.
Only if you, thank you. Don't, I'm looking for a male voice. Where am I looking? Thank you.
Also, as Mr. Adams pointed out with his earlier item, I just wanted to state for the record, we've adjusted the rules on the Business Preparedness Grant Program. So, the old rules are in the backup to the agenda, but we are submitting to the Clerk's Office the updated rules, which open up the eligibility requirements with respect to business licenses, and also, those updated rules will be online. I believe they might already be on the website, so that's just an FYI to the public.
Thank you very much, and thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, if I may.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve Agenda Item 35.
Thank you very much. This is a motion. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Adams. Money well-directed, thank you. Agenda Item 36, Boards and Commissions, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Reappointment of Members to the Neighborhood Partners Fund Board from the Following List of Nominees. Neighborhood Representatives. Greg Toussaint is the mayor's designee. Larry Schultz, Ward Six. Gail Quahley, Ward Four. And David Kress, Ward Five. And Staff Designees, Yol, Ido, Eteralde, is that pronounced properly? You know, in all these times with Ido, poor thing, I slay her all the time. Sally Christensen, Ward Four. Tanya Jackson-Ranter, Ward Five. Chance Beneventura, Ward Six. And Appointees of Nominees, Matt Tramp, Ward One. Elizabeth Held-Geline, Ward Two. Susan Faray, Ward Three. And as Neighborhood Representatives, and Dorian with Dorian Stonebarger, Ward One. And Brianna Ramirez, Ward Two. And Staff Designees, all wards. And I move to approve these boards and commissions. Please vote and please post. And the motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Agenda Item 37, Discussion Possible Action Regarding the Reappointment of Nominee Brian Wilson to the Regional Flood Control District Citizens Advisory Committee, Councilwoman Fiori. I understand you're prepared to make a motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I motion to approve Agenda Item 37.
Thank you. This is motion on number 37. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. On on 38, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Appointment of Nominee Amy Emanuel to Ward One Seat of Traffic and Parking Commission, Councilman Knutson, this is your motion.
Madam Mayor, motion to approve item 38.
Thank you very much. On Agenda Item 38, there's a motion to approve. Please vote, please post. Motion carries. Agenda Item 39, Recommending Committee Bills Eligible for Adoption at This Meeting. Bill Number 202017, City Attorney, would you read the bill, please?
Yes, ma'am. Bill Number 2020-17, First Amendment, An Ordinance to Amend LVMC Section 6.74.50 and 19.12.70 Relating to the Permissible Locations for Secondhand Dealers and to Provide for Other Related Matters.
Thank you very much. Councilman Anthony.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Bill Number 2020-17 with the First Amendment.
Thank you very much. This is a motion to approve. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. Bill Number 40, New Bills. Number 40 and 41 Bills, Number 2020-1, 82020-19, will be heard at Recommending Committee Meeting Monday, June 15, 2020. City Attorney, would you read the new bills, please?
Yes, ma'am. Bill Number 2020-18, An Ordinance to Amend LVMC Section 6.82.60 Pertaining to Smoking Lounges, to Update an Age Limitation to Be More Consistent with Federal Law Regarding Tobacco Sales and to Provide for Other Related Matters. Bill Number 2020-19, An Ordinance to Amend LVMC Section 10.32.20 Pertaining to the Crime of Battery, Which Constitutes Domestic Violence, to Update Penalty Provisions to Conform to Changes in State Law That Become Effective July 1, 2020, and to Provide for Other Related Matters.
Thank you very much. New Bills, Number 2020-18, 2020-19, are assigned to the June 15, 2020 Recommending Committee Members, Councilman Anthony and Councilwoman Fiori. I have just cleared with both who are in town and able to attend, but if any so designated or unable to attend, the Clerk's Office will coordinate finding substitutes as necessary in my direction, please. Thank you. Agenda Item 41. 42. 42 is abayed to the 8th of July. Well, are we having a good time? Okay, yes, because 43 was withdrawn. Well done, so we're on 44. SDR 77943, Public Hearing, Applicant Owner LAP or LAP Investment LLC for Possible Action, Request for Site Development Plan Review for Proposed 9,750 Square-Foot Parking Lot with Waivers of the Perimeter Landscape Buffer Requirements on Point 22 Acres on the North Side of Charleston, Approximately 330 Feet West of Moonlight Drive, C1 Limited Commercial Zone, Ward Three, Councilwoman Diaz. Planning Commission and Staff Recommend Denial. This is a public hearing, which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present?
I am. My name is Denise Basset, and I'm representing the owner. She's in California. She's got twin little girls that she can't be here.
Okay. Do you want to go ahead and speak here?
I'm not sure what I'm supposed to do, but I've met with the Councilwoman Diaz and some of the planning department and tried to come up with some kind of plan that they would hopefully pass. The owner, because of the COVID-19 and because of the riots and everything that's going on, she's asking that if we could somehow work something out. I realize that the process we're doing is backwards. It wasn't intended to be, but here we are. So, the plan I've submitted was worked out with the planning department. We all met onsite, and so now I don't, from there.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, nervous, sorry.
Let's turn it over to Mr. Summerfield.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, so as the applicant's representative has indicated, in working with the Councilwoman's office, we do have a revised site plan that I would like to put into the record. We have a number of condition additions and modifications that I believe satisfy both, at least in part, what the planning department was looking for, and definitely what the Councilwoman would want. So, instead of my normal presentation, staff is still recommending denial because there are waivers, but I will go through what the conditions of approval that have been worked out with the Ward Office, if that's acceptable.
Is that all right with you, Council? Okay.
So, Madam Mayor, on this item, we have several additional conditions that we would like to add, and I'll read these for the record. The first additional condition is, a perimeter wall shall be constructed adjacent to the residential development to the north and shall be a minimum of six feet in height. The perimeter wall shall be stucco-finished and painted to match the adjacent perimeter walls for continuity. The perimeter wall shall be permitted and completed within 90 days of final action. Second additional condition, a landscape plan shall be submitted to and approved by the Department of Planning prior to the time application is made for a building permit to reflect plant material acceptable to the Department of Planning and the City of Las Vegas Urban Forester. Third added condition, the onsite landscaping shall be maintained in a healthy and vigorous living condition by way of a third-party irrigation company. Failure to maintain the landscaping will result in the property and replacing dead vegetation with healthy living plants and providing irrigation to the landscaping from that point forward. The landscape buffer and associated plant materials are to be installed within 90 days of final action. Fourth added condition, all building permits not noted in any other condition shall be obtained within 90 days of final approval. Fifth added condition, wheel stops shall be provided in accordance with Title 190811, I'm pretty sure that's supposed to be 110. And then final added condition is, two handicapped parking spaces shall be provided onsite. One of the two handicapped parking spaces shall be a side-loaded wheelchair lift parking space. Finally, I have a couple of modified conditions. Condition two will be modified to read, all developments shall be in conformance with the site plan, landscape plan, and building elevations, date stamped 060220, except as amended herein. And condition five shall be amended to read, a waiver from the Title 1908 is hereby approved to allow an eight-foot-wide landscape buffer where 15 feet is required adjacent to the southern property line. And for the record, I will be giving the site plan to the Clerk's Office, but the site plan referenced by those modified conditions is here. They are, as the representative indicated, they are going to put in landscaping. They are going to put in landscaping. It will not be irrigated by an irrigation system, which is why they have the condition that they must use a third-party irrigating service to keep the plants alive. And then they, the wall that was mentioned is here, wheel stops here where there's spaces against a building, and then they've indicated the van space. And so, I'll submit this as the updated site plan for the Clerk for the record.
And was that signed off by the owner?
Yes. Yes, this is the same plan that she has here. And with that, that's staff's report, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here, or anyone from, no, no. Anyone here wants to make comment on this property and this Agenda Item 44? I'll close public hearing then, and we'll submit that. And any comments from Council before I turn it over to Councilwoman Diaz? Yours?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First and foremost, I want to say thank you to Denise. She and the owner meant to do something positive, and then it wasn't done in the appropriate manner, through the appropriate channels, and now it's kind of been a learning experience. But I appreciate her staying the course with us and working through this. I think that there's a, just so that my fellow council members know, there's a Pediatrics Office, and she paved the lot right beside it to provide more parking for the use of the customers, especially, I think, in light of COVID, we want to make sure there's more parking than less. And I think that's an upgrade from it being a dirt lot to being paved, but there were a lot of things that weren't considered or contemplated, and in light of how everybody is struggling to make ends meet, I know that there would be additional expenses for her to follow all of our code to the T. So, I've made it, I've pushed as hard as I could to a happy medium. I think I'm happy that that back wall would be, will be there to shield that house that abuts, that property line, so that is helpful to the neighbors and the neighborhood there. And, you know, all the other things that Mr. Summerfield read. Also, you know, making some time for times to get better, and maybe eventually to have more lush landscaping, and maybe put a water line down the road. That would be my wish eventually, but in light of the times that we're living in, we know everybody's tight in the pocketbook, we're making these steps for them today. So, I hope that you guys can support, and I motion to approve Agenda Item 44 with all of the amendments and conditions that Mr. Summerfield has stated into the record.
Okay, thank you very much. This is a motion to approve Agenda Item 44. Please vote and please post. That motion carries. Thank you. Good luck to you, and thank you, Mr. Summerfield.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And so, we're going to set the date on any appeals filed, required public hearings, and instructing the city clerks to set those public hearing dates and appeals from City Planning Commission Meetings, Dangerous Buildings or Nuisance Lit or Abatements, please?
Thank you, will do.
Okay, and we're moving on to our second public comment period. Citizen Participation, Public Comment During This Portion of the Agenda Must Be Limited to Matters Within the Jurisdiction of the City Council. No subject may be acted upon by City Council unless the subject's on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, please, give your name for the record, the amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker's allowed. It's your opportunity to address the council, but council will not respond or engage in dialogue. So, please, anyone who wishes to come forward and speak, please do so. And do we have any ecomments? Madam Clerk? None. Okay, and I just want to reiterate that we have Sherilyn Costner, Karen Livingston, and Larry, I think it says Simfer, but I can't read it, and Linda Whitebrook, and Nancy Haley. So, please. No, 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 it's fine. You're fine, we're fine, so we'll just go ahead, please, ma'am, now is your opportunity. And give your name again for the record, please.
Sherilyn Costner. I request that this honorable city council create a program to help Las Vegas business owners and managers like myself protect the police whose job duty is to protect us. About 10 years ago, I had worked at bookkeeping for the Frederick Douglass Foundation in Watts, California, for about two to three years. As I am sure you are aware, the Watts riots and the Rodney King riots that initiated in the Watts area and the surrounding Compton area, excuse me, this, I guess I lost my notes. We had programs in Watts where business owners would work with the police during times of public upheaval. We have in Las Vegas, we have Neighborhood Watch programs, but there's nothing for business owners. It is not acceptable, the level of violence that is being pushed at our law enforcement officers, not only in Las Vegas, but actually everywhere in the United States. Obviously, what happened to Mr. Floyd was illegal and immoral. It's not right under any circumstances, but that was not our police in Las It's not right under any circumstances, but that was not our police in Las Vegas. And we can, we can help in many ways. I don't know how much time I have, but basically, I've lost my notes, and I'm very nervous, and very upset about the officer being shot in his head, and that when I go to work, I have to go by now freeways with sheriffs carrying rifles out with their fingers on the triggers. I had a fire on the corner of my business yesterday in daytime. I get to the office about 10:00, the fire department was there. This happened in broad daylight. So this is an all-day matter. The level of violence in Henderson is so high that news cameras show up when our businesses are hit. However, we need to start thinking proactively, because now Las Vegas is dealing with riots. There are very sound ways that we can develop programs to assist police when they are outnumbered, okay, for not only protecting their lives, but also making a statement that we stand behind the police and that these violent protesters do not speak for me, they do not speak for the people.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. We agree with you. Thank you very much.
Well, I appreciate your protecting the founding principles of America.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. And if you would, again, state your name for the record, please.
I'm Karen Livingston, and Madam Mayor, due to the shutdown, I've not had the opportunity to speak in public, and I would ask that you respectfully give me three minutes.
We've got two, unfortunately. So please, go ahead.
Okay. As I said, my name is Karen Livingston. I am a neighbor and adjacent property owner of Floyd Land Park at Tulie Springs. Approximately six and a half weeks ago, I became concerned when numerous dump trucks started dumping thousands of yards of dirt behind my home. I called Councilwoman Fiori's office, and Mr. Bonaventura told me the hay barn was being transformed into an event center, and they were removing the trees, grass, and picnic pavilion on the lakeside of the hay barn. What has happened and is happening appears to be the making of a scandal. Having traced the meetings, the permits, and the documentation to support this project, I found it has been steeped in misinformation, incomplete documentation, and mystery. First off, neighbors and adjacent property owners were not properly notified as to the change of the use of the hay barn into a 500 occupancy event center complex. Secondly, the approximate 680 acres that make up Floyd Land Park, including the historic park core, has deed restrictions that limit it to use of passive recreation. The National Recreation and Parks Association defines passive recreation, and I would like that to be entered into the record because I have this here. Lastly, transforming the hay barn into an event center complex is a violation of the 2007 Floyd Land Park Master Plan. The Master Plan states, "In order for the transfer to occur, the City of Las Vegas and the State of Nevada agreed to prepare a master plan for the park that ensures that Floyd Land Park and the adjoining BLM lands are used for recreation, conservation, and critical infrastructure purposes. The city cannot sell nor develop for any purpose other than recreation, conservation, or critical municipal infrastructure. Changing the hay barn into an event center complex is a wrongful act. You are needlessly spending money on such..."
Thank you. Thank you very much. And what I would highly recommend is, as you speak with our head of parks and recreation or the Ward 6 office, so you can get clarity, because I think we feel that this has been done legally and appropriately. But you have absolutely your voice, and we thank you so much for sharing with us.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good morning. Larry Conford. I'm a member of the Floyd Land Park Action Group. I would like to add what Karen Livingston said earlier regarding adjacent property owners not being notified. There are 18 developments that either abut Floyd Land Park or within a thousand feet of it, and their residents were not notified. I will submit a list of those developments for the record. Approximately four weeks ago, a member of Save Floyd Land Park Action Group started to petition, and to date, we have acquired over 22,000 signatures calling for the city to halt the construction of transforming the hay barn into an event center. I want to make it clear that our group applauds the restoration of the hay barn to ensure structural integrity for future generations. It is the change of the use of the hay barn, the paved lighting parking area, the 3,000-square-foot restroom that includes a bride and groom's quarter and kitchen that we oppose. Last week, well, I would like to say it, two weeks ago, the board of Save the Red Rock voted to support us and oppose the transformation of the hay barn into an event center on behalf of their 65,000-strong members. Last week, we submitted a lengthy Freedom of Information Act request to the city, and we also sent a letter to Attorney General Aaron Ford requesting his office to investigate what the city is doing and determine whether the city is violating the agreement that transferred the control of the park from the state to the city. In that letter, we also included the names and phone numbers of three individuals who were instrumental in drafting the Nevada Senate Bill 444 and also the 2,7000 Floyd Land Park Master Plan. We are asking the Attorney General's offices to contact them as they can address the intent of the term passive recreation. Yesterday, we retained legal counsel, and we'll be asking the courts to issue a cease and desist order, and we are presently in the process of forming a 501(c), called the Protectors of Floyd Land Park at Tulie Springs. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Appreciate it.
I'd like to submit this also.
Please. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Madam Mayor. My name is Linda Whitebrook, and I am also here regarding Floyd Land Park. I live adjacent to the park. The intent of Senate Bill 444 and the 2,000 transfer agreement was without question to protect the rural, historic, and peaceful nature of the park. An event center now termed a pavilion is inconsistent with the intent set forth by years of public meetings and stakeholders' input. I am here today to bring this project out of the shadows and into the sunlight so that the council members can help us decide what is right and wrong. At this point, if you voted yes for the agenda items that have been presented, you are complicit to a project that is violating Nevada revised statutes and has breached the transfer agreement and quitclaim deed that was faithfully entered into by your predecessors. It is time to stop the current construction, hold public meetings, and allow the Attorney General to lead an investigation into what the options are to save Floyd Land Park project from commercialization. The city is spending money needlessly. This is a time, as has been mentioned, to tighten budgets. The city is spending time at a time when we don't have the money. Weddings and a rodeo roping event have taken place with the regard, without regard for the rules associated with park permitting, proper licensing, and public safety. We ask you to bring all these items back for rehearing in public meetings. You brought back a bad land ordinance after it was voted on. Please do the same with this project that is steeped in scandal. I thank you respectfully, Linda Whitebrook, and I'd like to submit this for the record.
Thank you very much. If you would, Ms. Campbell. Thank you. If you'd give it to Ms. Campbell here, please.
Good morning, Mayor, Council.
Good morning.
My name is Nancy Haley. I am a neighbor and adjacent property owner of Floyd Land Park at Tulie Springs. Our Save Floyd Land Park Action Group is organized, and we are appalled with the non-transparent process and cloak of darkness the hay barn fiasco has become. As previously said, we have over 22,000 signatures to save the park. We have filled out a public information request, which is due to us on June 11th. We have filed a formal complaint with the Attorney General to ask the state's land use lawyers to investigate the law that governs the park. We have also retained counsel. It is really shameful that during a pandemic and the economic crisis facing our families and friends, that we've had to spend hours and hours fighting to save Floyd Land Park that has essential legal protections that have served it well for the last 13 years. This is a park that is protected from pavilion event centers, competitive equestrian events, and other non-passive recreational uses. If all seven of you agree with not just the what, but the how this project has been orchestrated, then we as citizens will have no choice but to lose all hope and confidence in our local government. But I am hopeful that once all of you consider our evidence and consider the laws protecting the park, you will agree with the 22,000-plus that once you change this land, you cannot go back. The peacocks, the burrowing owls will leave, the rabbits and other wildlife will disappear, and the quiet, peaceful, historic park will be gone forever. Thank you, and I'm glad you listened to me.
Thank you very much for coming. Appreciate it.
I want to...
And we'll leave that. Mr. Braisted? Afternoon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Good morning.
Daniel Braisted, B-R-A-I-S-T-E-D. I have two items. One, I asked Councilman Diaz's office to forward an email to you, because I know your email box fills up. But I was asking, is maybe one, if your son would look at the idea of using a salt spray inside of the mouth to normalize this Corona-19. So if you could look for it, or if you want another copy of it, I'd be happy to forward it to you. The other item deals with, in November, I went to the old library on Washington, and I was approached by two marshals, and one of them was a G.I. Joe marshal, and he was rude, and he wanted me off the property, and he said I was trespassing. And so I left, and two days later, I wrote a letter to a number of people on the council, and they were all very supportive and assisted me. But I'm asking in this one, if you would ask the, is it Chief Freeman that you're, I'm asking if, if the wingman, the second individual, if he reported the rudeness to her, or did she hear it first from Mr. Adams? Because that's the problem. I think if we're going to curb this, what we have is the partner, the silent partner, has to have some authority, just like the cabinet has, that they can throw out, overrule the president. And so that is, I think, our first line of defense on this stupidness. So if somebody could research it and see if she heard it first from Mr. Adams, or if she heard it first from the partner, and that's what this letter explains.
Thank you. And I'm going to ask Mr. Adams to research his emails or how he got it, and then check with our head of public safety, and so...
It's a tough period, but thank you.
If you'll just follow up on that. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, Mike Ganson. Good afternoon almost. I have a question about the city's bail policy with all these looters and civil disobedience people that have been arrested. Are they getting bailed out real quick, or are we going to make this the greatest path of resistance? We don't, we don't want to be catering to them, but, you know, are they being bailed out? What's it, a day or two?
We don't have a dialogue here. I don't think it's appropriate for council to respond, but I'm going to turn, and if you would just have sidebar with our legal, Mr. Dork...
Yeah, it'd be nice to know.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And if you would step right over there with him, please, he can give you the information. Is there anyone else that wishes to be part of the second public comment? Okay, I am going to...
We did come up. Sorry.
Yes, do come right up, please. It's all right. You didn't need a part. It's fine.
Oh, okay.
What do I need to do? Cheryl Prater?
I'm sorry. Say it again.
What? My name's Cheryl Prater?
Okay.
All right. You guys have been doing, in my opinion, a great job with everything that's going on, and I appreciate you. I wish you guys, and I know this is technically doesn't, but can you please talk to our governor? Please? I have been down there on the front lines, okay? We have been peaceful, and yes, people have been yelling at the police, and we are trying to stop them, and the police have their hands tied. But when I see the police having to do their gas bombs or whatever with these people walking, I don't blame the police at all. I'm not blaming him. I'm blaming SISILAC for not having the National Guard down there. It's SISILAC that, that man is dead. It's his fault. Please, talk to our governor. And then, Ms. Mayor, I'm asking you for a curfew, please. These people are great people. I've been with them, okay? They just want to be heard, and I am disappointed that nobody is here. But there are the bad lots. They're coming in, and they're coming in at night, and it's ruining the message. Please, do a curfew. And it would be really great to see you guys down on the front lines, too, standing with us, walking hand in hand with them. The governor won't do it. You know how I feel about the governor. He won't do it, but please, can you guys do it? Please, I'm begging you. I've never seen this city like this. People, we finally came together to stop this. I don't care what political party you were in, we were together, and these people are ruining it. Please, I beg you guys. The governor is so out of touch.
Thank you.
He blames everybody. He blames Trump. Please.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
And my other thing I'd like to ask you...
Thank you.
...is that we have been on 12 weeks without any unemployment.
Can you do this? Okay.
Hi, Ms. Prater. Ms., yeah, Ms. Prater, your mic is off. I'm sorry. We have to limit it, but thank you so much. Thank you. Listen, Ms. Prater, thank you so much.
I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. Have a great day. We're with you.
Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item 48. And councilmember recognition comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. Are there any members of the council who wish to speak under the portion of the agenda? There always is, and so we'll start with you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you so much. So with the citizen participation today, we're going to start off with a film, so I'm going to just cue our person to show us our little parks film. Here we go.
We are standing in what could be considered as one of Las Vegas's best-kept secrets and most valuable assets, Floyd Land Park. Over 680 acres of lush parkland and ponds are located here in the northwest part of the Las Vegas Valley. The wonderful place represents a year-round getaway destination for thousands of Las Vegas residents and visitors who come to our amazing city each year. Sometimes referred to as Old Tulie Pond, this stock fishing location was constructed on the side of a historic pond and marsh complex that was used by Native Americans for thousands of years before the recent settlement of Southern Nevada. The ponds are supplied by a combination of wells and artesian spring flows that serve as an island of habitat for many wildlife species. Named for the growth of tulies, or cattails, it was originally a stagecoach stop between Las Vegas and the many mining districts that sprung up in the late 1800s northwest of Las Vegas along what is now U.S. Highway 95. The city of Las Vegas purchased the park in 1964 and was named after Floyd Lamb, the former state senator and chairman of the Senate Finance Committee. Purchased originally for the water rights, the park has grown and is used by many organizations for various uses, including a gun club, a horseback riding facility, and the Nevada Zoo Logical Society. The park was also once used as a ranch during the '40s and '50s, and a barn was constructed on the property to store alfalfa for local ranch owners. After years of neglect and non-use, the park was eventually transferred to the state of Nevada in 1977, where funds were allocated to develop and restore these beautiful grounds to a state park for all to come and enjoy. Twelve years later, the state of Nevada finalized their 1987 Master Plan, which again reinforced the need to revitalize, restore, and utilize the historic buildings of Floyd Lamb Park. This included reference to the 1978 Structural Survey and Development Plan to add expanded parking and renovation to the existing hay barn as a special event center, public assembly area. This, they felt, would be the best way to utilize the park and protect its vast historical assets as urban development encroaches upon the park. The park remained essentially the same for many years, with very little accomplished in the way of restoration and improvements, until 2003, when the state legislature passed SB 444, which transferred Floyd Lamb Park back to the city. which transferred Floyd Lamb Park back to the city. It was here that the restrictions on the deed made it clear that the park would be used for passive recreation and was expanded to include a clear definition of the park's future as it was originally conceived. This included the now historic hay barn and its designation and use as a special event center for cultural events, group picnics, and public and private gatherings. In 2007, a master plan was completed, and funding was allocated to start restoration on several buildings on the property, as well as funding for special events. The first building that would benefit from this restoration project was the Foreman's House, which is now used as the visitor's center. This vital building has since served as the focal point for events at the park that includes several country music concerts, such as the widely popular Cowboy Christmas Show and Celtic Games.
Moved here to Las Vegas in 2011 with the Boy Scouts. I'm a professional scouter, and that was the first year we were here at Floyd Lamb Park for our Mega Scout Expo. And it's just been a wonderful facility on smaller scales. We have camperees for our scout troops that camp overnight here and learn scout skills. We have our younger scouts here doing day camps. And so it's just been a great opportunity and a great partnership for the scouts.
Other private and public events are popular there as well, such as weddings, parties, meetings, and a host of other things that benefit and enlighten the community. In 2017, Mayor Protem Michelle Fiore was elected to represent Ward 6 for the city of Las Vegas. One of her first priorities was to schedule a tour of all of our parks and public areas to assess the needs and improvements that could be done in our great city. What she found at Floyd Lamb Park was an area being underutilized and underappreciated. The once majestic and historic hay barn was now cordoned off, surrounded by a metal chain-linked fence and was being used by the maintenance staff to store parts, machines, and building material. What's more, the once proud barn was now falling off its foundation and slowly deteriorating away. What was once a vital alfalfa storage facility was now a paint chip partial ruin. Mayor Protem Fiore's first question to the park staff was, hey, what can we do with this barn? When she was told that the building had been earmarked for restoration and was to be used as an event center and a facility for public assembly, she immediately saw it for what it was, a well-defined project that would provide the public with a long-term viable resource, while at the same time saving a piece of valuable Las Vegas history. The only thing preventing this immense idea was funding. Being no stranger to adversity and hard-fought projects, Mayor Protem Fiore rolled up her sleeves and got to work. Fast-forwarding to 2020. After two years of working with the Historic Preservation Commission, getting hundreds of thousands of dollars in private donations from people and businesses throughout Las Vegas, the project is now moving forward. For example, the notable Las Vegas home building firm of D.R. Horton is donating their time and architectural skills for the foundation, while at the same time, a local roofing company, Cooper Roofing, has volunteered to restore the roof. The list is long and the tasks complex. But when Las Vegas comes together for a cause, it comes together strong. As a result of this outpouring of support, the Hay Barn Project recently received a $150,000 grant from the Centennial Commission to be used for the barn restoration. And this has all been organized through SHPO, the Historic Preservation Office for the State.
We, our Kiwanians, are so happy for this restoration because we do citywide events. So in our case, we had been doing this run, it's a color run, a family fun activity that many residents participated. And we just go by, we use the park. As so far, we had been bringing in a stage to do our starting of the program, our award ceremony, all those kinds of things that you do with a stage. But now, we can do it inside.
The restoration of the barn creates an event center for us, and that now gives us an opportunity to have an enhanced resource. When we've been to other parks or other opportunities, we don't have that indoor element. So now we have an indoor element where we can have our merit badge clinics inside and come outside. It would entice us to want to continue to come back here because we can expand our programming, which is important to us.
Floyd Lamb Park has come a long way since Colombian mammoths roamed the grounds 13,000 years ago, and nomadic Native American tribes came in search of water. Like modern Las Vegas, it continues to grow, evolve, and mature. But for all its past history, the real story of the park will be written in the future by caretakers like us and those who come forward and care for her.
Thank you. Didn't that voice sound familiar? Didn't that sound like Morgan Freeman? Just saying. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for allowing us to show everyone for the last three years what our parks and our directors have been doing and working on, and I just want to thank everyone. With our end of the day and what we share with everyone is, first and foremost, I want to talk about George Floyd for a minute. And, you know, ever since I saw that video, I pray and meditate in the morning, and I pray and meditate at night, and the first breath I take is for George Floyd. And I just want everyone to know that we're all with George, and we're all for justice for George. Right now, we are praying hard for a miracle. And for Shay Mikalonis. This is our Metro Police Officer. He's 29 years old, as our Madam Mayor talked about earlier. And our Madam Mayor said to me yesterday, Michelle, believe in miracles, because I believe in miracles. So I'm believing in miracles, and I'm praying and breathing. And I just want everyone to know that I need you to say Shay Mikalonis's name out loud and pray for him hard because he's fighting for his life. And as Shay's fighting for his life, I want to be crystal clear that Shay's life matters. My life matters. Black lives matter, and blue lives matter. All of our lives matter. I just want to be crystal clear on that. And I also want to be crystal clear on your First Amendment right doesn't include looting, hurting our police, shooting our police, beating white people up, or anyone else. Your First Amendment right is your freedom of speech, not a freedom to be a criminal. So I just want to make that crystal clear, too. Now, on some happy thoughts. You can join our ward on June 5th at dusk, about 7:00 p.m., over at the Centennial Hills Park at 7:00 p.m. to watch Frozen 2. I will not be there on the 5th, but everyone is welcome to be there. I just have a meeting that's a few hours away. And now, through this crisis, we're doing farmers-to-family milk giveaway. Just like we did our drive-up Easter baskets, we are doing drive-up, we're giving 1,000 gallons of milk away on Saturday, June 13th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Please, everyone in the city and the county, everyone come, just drive through, pick up your gallon of milk. And I just want to thank our sponsors and hope to see you out there on Saturday morning, June 13th. Through this travesty of COVID and now riots, we are missing some of our locals here. And his name is Damian Moore. He's 17. He was last seen in the area of Michael Way and Cheyenne. He was last seen wearing black pants, black shirt, long sleeve, and a short-sleeved black shirt over the black long-sleeved shirt, a burgundy sweater, and a black-white coat. Please, if you see Damian or know where he is, please call our Metro Police at 702-828-3111, or Nevada Child Seekers at 702-458-7009. We are also missing Ruben Matut. He is Hispanic, African-American. He was last seen in the area of Twain and University Center. He's 14 years old. He's only 4'9". He's 100 pounds. He was last seen wearing black pants and a bluish-gray shirt. So please help us find Ruben. Call Metro at 702-828-3111, or Child Seekers at 702-458-7009. And my favorite part is our success stories at the Corridor of Hope. And we have Luis Sanchez. The Moore team first encountered Luis Sanchez in October of 2018. Mr. Sanchez had been homeless for four years, since 2014, with severe medical conditions. In the time since, the Moore team lost contact with Mr. Sanchez due to his encampment moving locations. And when the team re-engaged with Mr. Sanchez in 2020, he was living in an encampment in the old Moulin Rouge parking lot. It was apparent to the team that Mr. Sanchez's health was in steady decline. With this re-established connection, the Moore team provided wraparound services such as medical referrals, assistance with picking up his medication, and shelter referrals. Mr. Sanchez was recently housed in March with the COC Housing, the homeless through Salvation Army, and is currently enjoying his new home. So please have faith in our Corridor of Hope. Ms. Gibson, that was here earlier, they are doing such an amazing job for our homeless here. Thank you. And that's all, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, Councilwoman Diaz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. These have been very difficult months that we have been serving here as your elected representatives. First, we had COVID-19 come and paralyze basically all of our lives. And we have had to get used to a new way of doing business and working remotely from home, taking our precautions, and kind of watching what's unfolding on that front. And then, to add to that already difficult situation, we are all mourning for George Floyd's brutal murder. I'm hoping that justice is served. I think that we shouldn't be complacent. I don't think we should be quiet. And I hope that our law enforcement officers also feel that solidarity, that we all need to come together as a community for everyone's just safety and well-being. And we say that sometimes, but are we really thinking about what that means? And I know that right now, there's constituents of mine that are angry over the emergency ordinance we just adopted. But we have to balance everything. We have to ensure that everyone is going to be safe and protected. Even if you are peacefully protesting, there may be others that come to that, and their intentions are not aligned with the organizers' intentions. So please know that we're doing the best that we can, and we're going to continue to hold our institutions accountable and make sure that they're stepping up and that they see everyone, and they hear everyone, and they do everything that everyone is supposed to, the respect that everyone is supposed to receive. Know that I take this commitment seriously as a local government elected, but we have to have the conversations, we have to have the dialogue, and we all have to come together to get through this, too. Know that I see you, and I hear you, and I'm with you. Things have to change. So on that note, I have a few announcements here on my slides. We'll go to the first one, hopefully. The census is somewhat being blocked out. I know that right now it's hard to really think about this, but for every person that is not counted, we could lose out up to $20,000 to provide essential services for you in the next decade. So please, if you haven't filled out your census, it takes 10 minutes of your time. It's 10 questions, and it will mean the world to us with the resources we need to serve you. Right now, we're in a competition. We're neck and neck with Reno. We're still 0.1% ahead, but we need to make sure that we count everyone. We need that 62.4 to be 100%. Just want to reiterate, I know that our city manager and our legal counsel spoke about our business reopening grants that we are offering to business owners. We still have funds. You can get up to $4,000. You have to be a qualifying business who has a business here in our city limits. And this is going to help you procure PPE and do any retrofitting that you need to your establishment. So if you have any questions, please call our call center at 702-229-CARE, or go directly to www.lasvegasnevada.gov/reopeningresources to find that application and submit it, because it is first come, first served. So please, don't lose out on this opportunity to get much-needed relief for your small business and businesses qualify anyone who have three employees to 25. We're enlisting the help of our neighbors to help us name the park located at Harrison Marion. So please, send us any name suggestions to https backslash cityoflasvegas dot link backslash Ward 3 Parks, or call my office at 702-229-4623. We would love to have your input before July 31st, 2020. Thank you, Mask Posse. Mask Posse is IOTC, all of them are back, they're stagehand employees who work a lot of the entertainment jobs when concerts are happening or shows are happening. But they do not like to be spending idle time. So even though they don't have a job to report to these days, they are creating and making masks, all from donated material, donated time, donated distribution. And we were so pleased to be able to support seniors in Ward 3 with a cloth mask last week. So thank you to Nevada Hand and the Mask Posse for making this a reality for our seniors. Wanted to put a plug in, Vegas Strong Summer Academy is starting June 8th. And this is basically opening up to all community members who have kids that are ages 6 to 13. The academy will provide age-grade appropriate academic and recreational programming while adhering to small groups and social distancing. The academy costs $75 a week, and families who are having financial troubles do have the option of utilizing two financial assistance programs. So please, just because you may not have the means doesn't mean your kid is completely left out of this opportunity. Please call 702-229-PLAY for more information on this wonderful opportunity for our kids to finally have fun, interact with others, and maybe make up some of the summer slide. And as always, we're here to serve you. As your Ward 3 city councilperson, reach out to us at Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, @olivia ds lv, or you can always call us, 702-229-4623, or email us at ward3@lasvegasnevada.gov.
Thank you. Councilman Knutson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to say thank you to you and Councilman Creer. I think you represented the city very well over the weekend. And today, Mayor, your comments were obviously heartfelt, and I'm grateful. What really saddens me is that it takes these tragedies to remind us of the racial inequities in our society. And then we eventually return to our normal lives and lose focus until an event like the murder of George Floyd occurs again. We need to keep this dialogue going if we're ever going to make change for a better society and a better Las Vegas. I challenge all of us to continue to try to understand each other. But to do so, we need to listen to those with experiences different than our own. We're never going to address issues of inequality without making a genuine effort to understand what it's like to be a person of color in our community. We're never going to change systems that have worked to disenfranchise brown and black people without trying to understand experiences different than our own. I support the right to peacefully protest. I do not support the right to loot, destruction, or violence. There is no right to do that. We need to come together and call for peace. We are stronger together, and we are resilient. I'm still hopeful we can end racial injustice, starting in our city, in our county, in our state, but it's going to take a whole lot of effort. My thoughts are with George Floyd's family. My thoughts are also with the family of Shay Mikalonis. My thoughts are also with the family of Shay Mikalonis. These deaths are so senseless. It needs to come to an end. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Creer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Justice for one should be justice for all. It's very important to understand that the frustrations, hurt, and pain that the black community continues to feel is extremely deep-rooted. I've visited Ghana, West Africa, and the slave castles in Cape Coast, and I witnessed the dungeons where black men and women were held, and I've seen the teeth marks along the concrete for those who thought they could gnaw their way out. And as they passed through the door of no return and boarded to slave ships for their journey to places unknown towards slavery, there was no justice. For when a slave was hung outside the big house, and he or she was left there for days for the others to see them hanging from that tree, to send a message of this will happen to you as well, there was no justice. To the Jim Crow era of separate and still unequal, where towns would gather on a weekend night in a community in the town square and watch the lynching of a black man, a woman, or even a child, as if they were watching a minstrel show, there was still no justice. In 1991, when we all watched Rodney King almost beat to death on the streets of Los Angeles, and then subsequently, we watched as four officers were exonerated, there was still no justice. Trayvon Martin, Amadou Diallo, Sandra Bland, Breonna Taylor, Freddie Gray, Eric Garner, and there's still no justice, and the list is even longer. Why, when Ahmaud Arbery in Georgia was murdered by his father, by a father and son on February 23rd, once again captured on camera, there were no arrests until May? Why are the other three cops in Minneapolis had stood by and willingly watched former officer Derek Chauvin murdering George Floyd, still not charged and arrested? Why is the swift justice that would be applied to me and people that look like me not applied in many of these cases? There's a poem that sums up how many you're feeling by William Ernest Hindley, and it's called "Invictus." And it goes, "Out of the night that covers me, black as a pit from pole to pole, I think whatever gods may be for my unconquerable soul. In the fell clutch of circumstance, I have not wince nor cried aloud. Under the bludgeoning of chance, my head is bloodied, but unbowed. Beyond the place of wrath and tears looms, but the horror of the shade, and yet the menace of the year is fine, and shall find me unafraid. Matters not how straight the gate, how charged with punishment the scroll. I am the master of my fate, and I am the captain of my soul." I applaud the numerous police officials around the country, including our local Sheriff Lombardo, that have come forward to admonish what has taken place in Minneapolis. And we cannot let the actions of a few rogue cops that tarnish the badge to diminish the dedication of the majority of the good officers that live up to their oath of protecting and serving. We pray for justice for George Floyd's murder, and we also pray for Officer Shay and his family. I have said this, and I truly believe that no matter what the color of your skin is, your political persuasion or religious beliefs, you feel our pain. Protesting responsibly does not include burning, tagging, or causing destruction. We have to do better than that. It's imperative that the nation receives justice, because once again, justice for one is justice for all. Our fight continues. Thank you.
That sort of silences you. I think you sort of caught it all there. Councilwoman Seaman, please.
Thank you. I have some slides coming up. So first of all, I want to thank the Nevada Veterans Association, Devil Pups, and all the individuals who donated and came out and made the Veterans Memorial. We placed over 10,000 flags on graves of fallen heroes, so I really want to thank them for their donations and their help. Do we have slides? They're not up on my screen. Okay, there we go. So I wanted to say thanks to everyone. And then I want to talk again. We reiterate that we have business grants, and I guess only 32% have applied and been given the money for their businesses. I know there's a lot of small businesses out there who could really use the help with the $4,000 small business help if they're related to COVID. So if you have any questions about qualifying or need help, you can call my office at 702-229-2420, or you can reach out directly to 702-229-2144. Then I want to talk about what's happening in our city. I actually lived through the Rodney King riots. I had to protect my business. And I want to say what I see what's happening around this country and our city and our state is appalling, and it doesn't honor Mr. Floyd. We need to be protesting in peace. We need to honor his life by doing so. He was senselessly murdered, but the way that it's been handled around the country takes away from what we really need to be honoring. I want to thank our mayor and the sheriff for urging the governor to bring in the National Guard. We can't let people come into our city and destroy it. So I appreciate the leadership. I appreciate the swift action by Metro Police. And I want to ask everyone to please pray for George Floyd's family, and please pray for our officer who is struggling for his life, Mr. Mikalonis. And just spend time and think about, when you see an officer, thank them for their service. Right now, across this nation, many officers have been killed in the last week. We don't even know their names. So we need to understand that it is an open season on police officers. Two wrongs don't make a right. While there are bad characters, there is such a small percentage, most of those officers I know, because my father was a law enforcement officer, and my husband. So I just ask you to pray for all of our fallen officers' families, and please pray for the 29-year-old that is fighting for his life right now. And we want to send a message that our officers are not going to tolerate people coming into this city and trying to destroy it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So in addition to those heartfelt words, and so meaningful, just to add again, those of us who believe in the peaceful protest, those who are doing the rioting and the destruction, they are silencing the voice of all the rest of us who are trying to do this peacefully. Don't let them, don't let these rioters and these unlawful people, individuals, and business destructors take over and take our voice away. They have to be stopped, and they think they're part of the process that can come in without regard to individual protection and business property protection. But I do want to say that in my office, we continue to be bombarded with those who are still trying to get unemployment compensation through DETER. We hear your voices, and as you know, this is a state responsibility. So while we don't have access to the system, here are a few suggestions for those of you who are still out of work, which we have been trying for the past three months, to be your voice, all of you who are out of work. We started off with less than 2% unemployment. We're over 33% now. And so the key is, as we begin to open businesses and hopefully get our hotels employing those of us who are out of work back again, here are some thoughts of what you might do, because you keep calling, and my staff keeps answering you and trying to hold your hands through this process. Call your state legislature. You can Google and find out who your legislature is, and do call your legislator, your state senator or your state assembly person. We know some of you have been successfully with the DETER, which is the Department of Employment Training and Rehabilitation, with issues there. If you don't know your representative, call 702-486-3883, 486-3883, to find out who your representative is for your area. Some people have also been successful working through Workforce Connections, which is Southern Nevada's local workforce development board. They work closely with DETER as well, so they're another option for you. That's the Workforce Connections. And their website is nvworkforceconnections.org, nvworkforceconnections.org. And finally, you can try calling the main number for the state of Nevada, which is 702-486-3000, and ask to speak with DETER. But hang in there, these are your dollars, and you deserve them, and you will get them. And so, a couple of points. I have such a wonderful office staff. Some thoughts, at some point when the protests and rallies are over, my hope is that the passion and drive, which is fueling the protests and rallies, doesn't dissipate. The passion must remain. In order to change the system, you feel that it's flawed, you must get involved. You can do so in a variety of ways, and most importantly is, first and foremost, you have to vote. Secondarily, you can volunteer. Pick an area in which you're interested, and I can almost guarantee you, there's a similar nonprofit or church group out there for you. And if there isn't one, begin one. And finally, my last suggestion is to apply to one of the many boards and commissions that we have here at the city, and these committees at the county and other municipalities. No amount of explanation or hearsay can take the place of firsthand experience. And if you have an issue, communicate it with us. We can't work in the dark if we don't know what your feelings and thoughts are. And I can't thank our staff enough here at the council and in our city that are fielding your phone calls and your emails with the constant pain of trying to get your jobs back. We hear you. We're here for you, and we are trying to advise you as best we can. So most importantly, thank you for loving this city, as we all do, and for your compassion and efforts to explain what you're feeling to others. Again, we have to get ahold of the unlawful rioters and looters that are out there, which will help us in turn control our own community and continue on the pathway to making us and sustaining our one-family population. That's who we are, and I know and believe we are a community like none other. So please work in the positive vein, continue your peaceful protests, and get ahead. If you know that somebody's out there looting, or you see something new in your apartment that wasn't there yesterday, and you have someone living there, and you don't know what they're doing at night, but they're not home or in your own home, take it on yourself to make sure that you know who they are, what they're doing, and make sure that there is no more participation in looting the businesses of so many people, all races, all religions, all colors, looting the businesses that they've worked a lifetime to establish. So please do it, and continue the faith in our beautiful community. I thank all of our staff. I thank our law enforcement. I pray for all of those who absolutely Councilman Creer spoke to. And there's so many more. Injustice is so bad. But know that we keep working here, and we are devoted to you all, our city members, all city members. And our next council meeting will be Wednesday, June 17th, at 9:00. And we wish you safety. Be part of the cure, not part of the program and problem. Be part of the cure. Communicate to us what we need to be considering and doing, and we will make sure the word is spread, and we will give you our best efforts. So thank you. Be safe, be healthy, and we will prevail. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.